If you need me to speak louder or softer, I can do that.
You're good. Yeah, it sounds good. Good. Thank you very much. And anyone else?
Richard, have you done the sheriff?
Bill here.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Uh, yeah, go ahead and talk. Hey, Bill.
Hi. How's everybody this evening?
Yeah, you look good. You actually look perfect. Nice background. Go ahead and talk for 30 seconds. I'm gonna check your audio on TOTV.
Go ahead and talk, Bill, for him. He's checking you on TV.
You want me to talk? I'm kind of talked out from a busy day of, of meetings and whatnot. But I appreciate you having me here this evening. I, uh...
Awesome. Thank you, Bill. You sound good. Right. Anyone else? We've got a lot of...
Hello. You got me okay?
Howdy, Al. Go ahead and talk for 30 seconds and I'll check you out.
Okay. How you doing? Just had a good finance audit committee meeting. We're doing well. How's everybody tonight? A lot of squares. Look at all the squares. Hmm. Does anybody really look good on Zoom? I want to know.
Al, keep your camera to your right a little bit. And while you're doing that, talk more, please.
To my right? Oh, that's to my left. Ooh. How's that?
A little more.
How's that?
Keep talking so I can see what you're doing.
Ah, here I am.
Yeah.
Is that you, Richard?
That's me.
Okay. How am I doing now? Looking good?
You're doing good. Uh, you know what? I don't think we have time to adjust your audio. Yours is just a little hot, so maybe try not shouting. Uh, but you're, you're good. All right.
Good.
Uh, TOTV is about to go live in about three minutes, guys. We will be playing these... If everyone, um, looks for the TOTV pin me, there's a feed among all the squares that says TOTV pin me. If you click on the three dots in the upper right-hand corner, or you double-click on it if you have a touch device, that'll pin the device. That's how you'll be able to watch and follow the meeting in its entirety. That's how you'll be able to see the, um, votes. You'll be able to see the timer. Um, and, uh, please follow the meeting that way. And you'll be able to see the open, uh, Claudia, you'll be able to see the open, uh, the City Council video open. And after that, we'll go to the wide shot of the empty forum, and then you guys can commence the meeting.
Did you want me to say more?
Ed, go ahead and talk for about 20 seconds.
You want me to talk? I'm kind of talked out from a busy day of of meetings and whatnot. But I appreciate you having me here this evening. I I.
Thank you, Bill. You sound good. Right. Anyone else?
Hello, you got me okay?
Howdy, Al. Go ahead. Talk for thirty seconds and I'll check you out.
Okay, how you doing? Just had a good finance audit committee meeting. We're doing well. How's everybody tonight? A lot of squares. Look at all the squares. Does anybody really look good on Zoom? I want to know.
Al, keep your camera to your right a little bit, and while you're doing that, talk more, please.
To my right? Oh, that's to my left. How's that?
A little more.
How's that?
Keep talking so I can see what you're doing.
Ah, here I am.
Yeah.
Is that you, Richard?
That's me.
Okay, how am I doing now? Looking good?
You're doing good. Uh, you know what? I don't think we have time to adjust your audio. Yours is just a little hot, so maybe try not shouting. Uh, but you're you're good. All right. Uh, two we're two TVs about to go live in about three minutes, guys. We will be playing these. If everyone um looks for the T O TV pin me. There's a feed among all the squares that says T O TV pin me. If you click on the three dots in the upper right hand corner, or you double click on it if you have a touch device, that'll pin the device. That's how you'll be able to watch and follow the meeting in its entirety. That's how you'll be able to see the um votes. You'll be able to see the timer. Um, and uh, please follow the meeting that way. And you'll be able to see the open Claudia. You'll be able to see the open uh, the two, the city council video open. And after that, we'll go to the wide shot of the empty forum, and then you guys can commence the meeting.
Did you want me to say more?
Ed, go ahead and talk for about twenty seconds.
Uh, now is the time for all good men to come to the aid of their party. Four score and seven years ago, our fathers brought forth.
All right, we're good. Thank you very much, Ed. All right. Richard Swingler signing out.
Good evening and welcome to the very first city council meeting for the city of Thousand Oaks of twenty twenty one. Would you please join me in pledging allegiance to our flag, followed by a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We were holding a moment of silence in memory of the three hundred and eighty thousand Americans who have died from COVID related diseases, as well as in mournful reflection of the deadly insurrection at our Capitol. And with that, I ask the clerk to please do the roll call.
Councilmember Adam?
Here.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Councilmember McNamie?
Here.
Mayor Protem Engler?
Here.
And Mayor Bill de la Peña?
Present. Thank you. Uh, item number four, we do not have any requests for a continuance or a public hearing item. So with that, we will go to number five, which is special presentations. And today is indeed a very special presentation. In fact, it is one about the the COVID update to be given by our city manager Drew Powers. And it is also a special presentation, which is now for the first time also taking questions and comments from the public. So I'll now turn it over to Mr. Powers.
Hi, good evening, uh, Mayor Bill de la Peña, members of the city council and the public. Um, as we begin the new year, um, I felt it was important to give an update uh, as I've done at the outset of every city council meeting uh, for uh, every meeting since March on the state of COVID nineteen and uh, where we've been and really where we're heading and what's in front of us. Uh, before I share the latest data, I think it's important that uh, we remind those watching of the complex web of challenges associated with managing a global pandemic, especially one that has disrupted life as we know it for over ten months now. This is a public health crisis. We, like most small and midsize cities in America, do not run a public health department. And therefore, Thousand Oaks, along with all the other cities in Ventura County, are bound together under the Ventura County Public Health Department. As an arm of the state, Ventura County is responsible for implementing the governor's and the state health department's directives. Since the outset of the pandemic, myself, uh, along with colleagues from the other ten cities across the county, have continued multiple coordination calls each week. We are all providing support to the public health professionals and county executive staff. And we've continued to adapt our response, our workforce alignment, and our messaging as the circumstances have evolved. Tonight's virtual city council meeting is yet another example uh, of that evolution. The city council and city staff have worked hard on emergency response, moving to a virtual city hall, and having taken action to support businesses, residents, nonprofits, and arts organizations. Our localized rental assistance program has alone resulted in eight hundred and thirty six thousand dollars in support to those needed. As a reminder, here flashing before you are just some of the consistent messaging on public health topics, ranging from full page ads and social media posts to our Pacific Arts Plaza marquee and numerous short term form videos. The focus now is on vaccination, and I'll talk a bit more about that in just a few minutes. I do want to touch specifically on enforcement, as there have been a number of questions posed relating to this uh, topic. And I want to talk about enforcement in two areas. Enforcement of the state order on businesses and enforcement of the state mask mandate. So first, enforcement of state order on local businesses. Whether you agree with the specific actions or not, the state's regulations are binding on all jurisdictions. The city's role has been one of support to county code enforcement professionals and environmental health staff as part of what's called the Business Ambassador Program. We have focused on education, technical support, and where needed, enforcement support. Because the health orders are issued by the county, which is a separate governmental entity, our role is to attempt to gain compliance through education, and if needed, to issue county of Ventura closure paperwork and citations to businesses and to document that activity for the county for court proceedings. Businesses that have chosen to remain open in defiance are facing consequences: loss of health permits, potential loss of ABC licenses, and expensive court fees and penalties. But they do have due process rights, and those take time, especially during a pandemic. Some of our businesses, and I will uh, you know, stress this is a very, very small number in comparison to the largely compliant numbers of businesses that we have, have been in court in recent weeks and will continue to be there. There have and continue to be rounds of business assistance grants. In fact, the county is ready readying another twenty million dollars in business assistance that just discussed at their board meeting this morning. Those operating in defiance of the state order will render themselves ineligible for these types of grants. As I mentioned, a vast majority of our businesses are operating appropriately. And I'd like to take a moment to thank the Chamber of Commerce here in the Cano Valley, who have worked so hard to support our local businesses. They've hosted webinars and advocated where needed. Please do anything that you can to support your favorite local business. As I've said before, they need you now more than ever. Next, on the matter of enforcement of the state mask mandate. At the conclusion of my remarks tonight, um, our sheriff, Bill Ayoub, will speak briefly regarding enforcement. The state of California issued mask guidance for the entire state in June and has updated it several times. Quite simply, you are expected to wear a mask unless you are doing something that falls within one of the specified exemptions. The guidance is clear, and it's the right thing to do. There is a lot of understandable frustration at those who choose not to abide by the guidance or willfully do so as an act of protest. That said, there is a misperception that our local law enforcement personnel are choosing not to enforce the mask mandate. In reality, the state's guidance provides for a number of exemptions relating to health conditions, both mental and physical. You'll see some of those written on the screen here that are required via the Americans with Disabilities Act and make concrete enforcement extremely difficult and nuanced when dealing with mask issues. The difficult reality is that we are not going to successfully enforce our way to mask compliance. It is a personal and societal responsibility to wear one, and we call on everyone to do so. As I've shared multiple times over during these meetings and through our public messaging, the guidance is quite simple. Don't gather, take hygiene seriously, wear a mask, and support your neighbor and local business in a safe manner. All that said, we are in an extremely perilous place right now. Our current numbers and the numbers that are going to be issued later today by the county of Ventura show a continued average of over a thousand COVID cases every day. Today specifically, thirteen hundred and twenty six. Four hundred and forty nine people with COVID in our hospital, hospitals across the county, and uh, over eighty in the intensive care unit. We're also reporting again for the second time in two weeks, over twenty fatalities, twenty one to be specific. Seven were uh, um, categorized yesterday as dying from COVID, and last week we had other numbers in the twenties. These are numbers that are um, reflected from late December through today that are reported today, but it's a significant uptick in deaths. You also see on the chart in front of you the um, COVID cases and the hospitalizations, and you see how these numbers and upticks correlate with holidays. And as the staff at the Public Health Agency uh, have pointed out, we were beginning to see a decline in mid-December after Thanksgiving. Uh, and then since that point in time, you're seeing uh, a substantial uptick. And as I mentioned, we're averaging over a thousand COVID cases a day for over a week now. You have to assume that almost anyone around you has the potential of being contagious at this point. And the safest place to be is at home with those in your household. Last week, Ventura County had the third highest rate of cases in the state of California. L.A. County was fourth. As the public health leadership said this morning, this week, this week in particular, will be critical. That said, I think there are some bright points and bright notes, and I want to share those because they're notes of hope. The county, along with cities cities and counties across the state, is working aggressively at vaccine distribution. And there is a light at the end of the tunnel. You see in front of you a listing of the various phases and the rough timeframes around that. Um, we are currently in phase one A of vaccinate uh, of uh, vaccinations, and we're coming close to the conclusion of one A in preparation early next month to move into phase one B. The guidance and the uh, tenor around this is continuing to shift and change as new directives come just today with the directive of trying to push for those sixty five and older um, for vaccination. And so as those uh, pieces of information from the federal government shift and change and come to the states, um, we're working with our county partners to incorporate that into the plan. Uh, the county and all the cities in the county are working in conjunction to staff up and man vaccination sites at various locations throughout the county. Once finalized, these will be shared with the public at large and will provide clear guidance on the best method for you to sign up and understand when it's your opportunity to be vaccinated. And uh, as you see in phase one B, the key function there earlier um, February through March is the critical infrastructure workers, essential workers, law enforcement and fire teachers. And as it lists here, those seventy five and up, and we anticipate that potentially shifting to sixty five and up. You do need to stay, take take the moment to stay informed, and uh, the county of Ventura has a website uh, where you can sign up uh, not only to be uh, kept abreast of what's happening, but also to uh, sign up to volunteer if you can assist. Those that are perhaps retired from the healthcare profession or have previous experience, uh, they're looking for volunteers to vaccinate. Uh, having that ability will stretch the hours that clinics are able to be open and distribution sites are able to be open, assuming that the volume of shots uh, is available. So uh, please go to uh, please go to um, the county site, sign up, uh, VenturaCountyRecovers.org, sign up to uh, register for vaccine updates. And if you're interested and able to volunteer, encourage you to uh, take the time to do so. I can assure you that the cities are working in close consult with the county of Ventura um, to move as quickly as they are able to. That includes putting our staff resources uh, available to assist with logistics regarding uh, vaccinations uh, as needed. And we will uh, keep our public and our residents informed uh, clearly and consistently about what's happening regarding vaccinations in these weeks ahead, as we anticipate a lot of information flowing. With that, I wanted to uh, pass the baton over to uh, my colleague Sheriff Bill Ayoub.
Uh, well, thank you, Mayor Bill de la Peña and council members uh, for allowing me to speak here this evening. Uh, Mr. Powers, thank you for the clear uh, explanation of what is without question a difficult and complex issue. Um, your remarks regarding enforcement of the state's face covering mandate are spot on. It's an extremely problematic mandate to regulate, and that is an understatement. Generally, we see very good compliance throughout the community uh, with the restrictions imposed by the health order. We have seen a few high profile examples locally of groups defying the mask mandates in public protest. Protesting, of course, in the midst of a raging pandemic is strongly discouraged, uh, but is permissible under the state's stay at home order and activity that's strongly protected by the First Amendment of the Constitution. It's important to remember that we are all members of this community. We, most of us have family, loved ones, close friends at high risk for serious illness related to COVID nineteen, and we're in a very dangerous period in the course of this pandemic. We all have shared responsibility to follow the guidance of our healthcare professionals, to wear masks when appropriate and possible, to wash our hands and sanitize regularly, avoid gatherings, maintain social distance, and so forth. We've all heard this this guidance, and we have to follow it. We know that many of our local COVID infections are attributed to gatherings in the home. And now is the time for everyone to dig deep and do their part to help our community emerge from the grip of this pandemic. If any community can do it, this one can, and I'm proud to be a part of serving it. So thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff Ayoub, for your remarks. I appreciate them. I um, as I mentioned at the beginning of the COVID update, we did give the public opportunity to make comments regarding uh, the enforcement. And so I just, we received about fifteen or eighteen comments regarding item five. And okay. Okay, and number three, would that be under, but it says under public comments here, so we will take those right now. We are still under COVID update. Yeah, so the questions, the que, the questions that um, are being posed is um, why law enforcement, why deputies are not keeping maskless protesters apart or away?
Is that a question for me, Mayor?
Uh, Sheriff, that would be a question for you. Yes, thank you.
Uh, I I I feel as though that was addressed in our comments. The um, protest activity um, similar to what we've seen since um, I believe it was May uh, for a variety of reasons in our community is lawful activity that's very closely protected by the First Amendment of the U.S. Constitution. Uh, we hate, we didn't interfere with um, protest activity in the summer. Uh, we don't interfere with it now unless there is overt acts of violence, property destruction, um, dangers to the general public. Those who choose to gather and protest are doing so of their their own free will. And I would encourage anybody that is not interested in being part of uh, an event that could be considered a super spreader event or certainly a dangerous environment for contracting an illness um, to stay away from uh, groups that do such such things. Um, the mask mandate, as as was spoken to, uh, is extremely problematic. Um, I I'd even say near impossible to enforce. Uh, we simply don't have the means to vet any of the many excuses that are permissible under the health orders for not wearing a mask.
Thank you, Sheriff. Are there any questions from council members?
Uh, yes, please, Mayor.
Go ahead, Mr. Adam.
Thank you. Uh, I think the public can see that over the last year, the city has really gone to Herculean efforts to deal with COVID nineteen in our community. And along with Sheriff Ayoub, we pursued a course of of uh, compliance through education. And that's exactly the course we've taken, whether it's through the media or through videos, through YouTube, through the Acorn. We have reminded people constantly to uh, and you know, all know the reminders, wear wear your mask, wash your hands, be socially distant. Uh, you know, as to treat this with a a public health problem with criminal enforcement is, as Sheriff Ayoub said, is very problematic and almost impossible. So it really boils down to social responsibility. And I must say, the vast majority of residents of Thousand Oaks are doing just that, being responsible, complying to try to get this COVID business under control. And the city, of course, has stepped up in so many ways in helping business and helping renters. It just, the list goes on and on, and we can, we will continue to do that. From everything I'm hearing, this whole pandemic, at least here in Ventura County, might peak in late January and start to level off in the spring and start to come down in the summer. And of course, part of that's just the general direction of the disease, and a lot has to do with the vaccinations. Uh, one question I would I would ask to Mr. Powers, do we expect to see uh, vaccination centers spring up here in Thousand Oaks to uh, speed the um, the dissemination of the of the vaccine?
Uh, yes, Councilmember Adam, uh, we do anticipate an East County presence of a vaccination center. Uh, we're having um, a all hands meeting with our our city manager colleagues and county personnel on Thursday morning uh, regarding that. And uh, I think it's fair to assume that, and there was discussed in the Board of Supervisors meeting this morning, that there will be an East County presence. Exactly what that looks like and uh, what the hours and the details associated with it, that's still forthcoming. But um, and um, you know, to to add to that, we would also advocate for such. Uh, we want to ensure that our residents here have as much access uh, quickly and easily to vaccinations as possible.
Well, that seems to me to be a very effective way to get the vaccine vaccine out to as many people as possible and also to engender some public confidence at the same time. So that's good news. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Jones, did you have a question?
No, did I do something to?
Oh, okay, it was Mr. Engler.
As long as you called on me, and I hope.
Please go ahead, Ed.
I hope this isn't considered an ad hominem. Remark. remark. But I have to say that we've had a president that has such, had such, set such a bad example by never wearing a mask and having large rallies, encouraging people to be there without a mask, and giving some people, I think, in our community who are good people, who feel that there's some, like, manhood or womanhood in daring to go without a mask, there there's no virtue in that. There, you're really not a, you know, a real man. You're a real murderer is what you are. And I'll be glad when we have someone in the White House who will wear a mask and set a good example. I just felt I had to say that. Thank you.
Mr. Engler, Mayor Potem Engler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a quick comment and then a couple of questions, I think. In terms of wearing a mask, it, it, people who wear a mask are, are part of the solution. And I encourage everyone to be part of the solution and not part of, of the problem of, of spreading this disease. In, in terms of my questions, I have a, a couple of questions, I think, for Sheriff Ayub, and then perhaps one for Mr. Powers as well. Sheriff Ayub, we have had some ongoing demonstrations similar to what occurred earlier this year with social justice issues that came about. At, at that time, the sheriff was very, very active in protecting the demonstrators and also making sure that they stayed in, in an area that was safe for them. Currently, we have demonstrations almost weekly out on Lynn Road across the freeway. Are you doing any intervention there? Are you doing monitoring of that? How are you keeping tabs on that?
We do, we do closely monitor that sort of activity throughout the county. And I'm certainly are aware of that group and their activities on the Lynn Road overpass and other areas of the city. We do monitor and look for public safety concerns. Generally, they, they've been very minimal. There have been some issues that we've addressed with that group, and, and they quickly complied. So, so by and large, there's, there's been very few reported issues of, of behavior that would pose a public safety concern outside of certainly COVID spread or some sort of, some sort of disease spread.
Thank you. And then, and then we did have one incident where there was the invasion of one of our shopping areas where people attempted to rush the door and that sort of thing. That required an intervention on your part. How do you, do you have a, a, a way of determining when intervention is necessary? And can you speak to that particular incident and how you determine intervention was necessary?
Sure. That, that certainly was a call for service. We were notified that this, this event had occurred. We'd, we'd heard information circulating in the community that, that a group was intending to do some, some action of that sort. We said, we just didn't know when or where. When we were called, and, and stores, certainly businesses that are doing their darndest to comply with very strict guidelines that, that they must meet to stay in business are, are and should be completely off limits to this type of activity. An individual store such as Sprouts, it's a standalone location, is private property. The proprietors of that property have the right to have rules and regulations, and they have the right to refuse service to people. And if wearing a mask is a mandate that that store is put in place, and shoppers don't want to wear a mask or can't wear a mask, they can offer an accommodation for someone needing to pick up goods, goods from that store by way of home delivery, or curbside pickup, or a variety of other options that will fill a shopper's needs while allowing the store to maintain safety inside by having masked, masked customers inside. That being said, the mask guidelines remain problematic for us to enforce. However, in a situation like that, there becomes conventional law that we can resort to using should the business or a shopper in the, in the vicinity of people protesting, if you will, and use that term loosely, in the form of trespassing, in the form of assault or battery, should something like that occur. But there are certainly requirements that, to be met for the threshold of those crimes to, to be met. In this case, we, we were notified of a disturbance involving some people that had entered the store, evidently looking for shocking reactions from other shoppers and making a statement and so forth. They immediately left when our deputies asked them to at the request of the store, and they were cooperative with our staff. We had no criminal behavior reported to us. And certainly nobody stepped forward willing to swear out a complaint of some type of criminal violation. So it's, it's in, in my view, anybody interested in doing something like this should think really long and hard about it. We certainly don't support it, and we'll take every step that we can to prevent that from happening and to respond appropriately if and when it does happen again. I just think it's bad behavior, and it does nobody any good.
Thank you. Yes, if, if someone crosses the line into a otherwise criminal behavior, then I, I believe you, you can step in on that. So thank you for that, giving me a feel for where you think intervention is needed. Mr. Powers, in terms of tests, or in terms of the vaccine, has the county flushed out all the details yet on how people are going to apply for vaccines? How are they going to be administered? I know that we're mentioning that there'll be administration sites set up by the county in East County, in the East County, our area. Is there to be private partners that are involved in this? Has that been flushed out yet by the county?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Potem, for the question. The, the short answer is that, yes, all those details are in the process of being flushed out. What's important to, to note is, you know, right now, as things stand, they're anticipating that capacity will outpace the vaccine allocation within a week, week and a half. So we're still at a point in this where getting out of this first Phase 1A is, is several weeks down the line. The phase that we are in right now is focused on standing up sites and locations that will be high-capacity vaccine distribution sites. Those will be paired along with a variety of other distribution methods that will involve pharmacies. It will involve point-of-workplace distributions in some settings. For instance, between law enforcement personnel and fire personnel, those will be distributed on job sites in some cases. And the same goes in other essential worker environments. And so it will depend on the category and the grouping, and it'll depend on the amount and availability of the vaccine. But there will be an appointment process. The county is working to stand up that appointment process. So there will be some components of that that will be shared as soon as we have those details.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Powers. And, and I just want to close with a, one of our former colleagues, when this first came about almost a year ago now, he, he compared COVID to some of the sacrifices that people needed to do in prior times, such as during World War II, when I know my father and a lot of people's fathers went off to war for years and sacrificed their lives for years. Our colleague, our colleague said that we're being asked to stay home and watch TV. I, I think we've got this. And that is, wearing a mask is, is a very simple thing to do that will help bring us through this. So for those who have, are wearing masks, thank you. For those who are thinking about other ways of doing it, consider the mask. It, it will really help.
Thank you, Mr. Engler. Are there any other comments or questions from council members? Sheriff Ayub, oh, actually, I do have a question for our city attorney regarding the protests on Lynn Road overpass. Do those groups have a city-issued permit? Or does the sheriff perhaps know if they have a county-issued permit?
Thank you. I don't know if they actually pulled a city-issued permit or not. I don't have that information at this time.
Can we compel that they issue, that they seek a permit?
I, I think the city managers.
Okay.
Just to answer the question briefly, I'm, I'm not aware of any permits being pulled for that. That type of activity would not traditionally be a permit-based activity that groups would, would seek to do that. And in terms of, of compelling a permit, it's a, that's a more nuanced question. That would, if we got into a situation where things were impacting in a significant basis right of way and otherwise, I know our, our chief, Jim Fryeup, is aware of the, the fact those, those have been, I think, ongoing at that location since November. And in that, the patrol sergeants and the others that are out on patrol there keep tabs on that. We're aware of concerns that were expressed from last weekend on impact and right of way. We encourage anyone that sees that thing, something like that, they can certainly make a phone call to Police Department, and we'll go out and check out if there is impeding right of way or issues regarding health and safety, then Police Department will absolutely intervene.
Thank you. So my question is more of a timeframe now. We will have a new president on January twentieth. The election was absolutely not stolen, contrary to the minority's belief. And I wonder how long this will go on until we say enough is enough and we need to move on. I don't know exactly who would be able to answer that question, but people have to come to grips with reality and not keep watching the QAnon-type conspiracy programs. So I'm just wondering whether, what we can do to compel people to just let the rest of us live in peace.
I'll try to take a stab at that, and Tracy can jump on as needed. But, you know, there are, you know, time, place, and manner components of First Amendment-protected activity. And so, and we have examples, you know, for instance, that there've been some consistent, consistent protests over the years at Planned Parenthood locations, for instance. There are, so that is just a sort of an element of our democracy. It exists there. I think the important component for us is if there is an impact to health and safety, if there's an impact to right of way, if there is an impact to city infrastructure, those are certainly things we work to, to address accordingly.
Okay. If there are no any, no further questions or additional comments, I want to thank Sheriff Ayub and Chief Freihoff for attending today's meeting. Mr. Engler, did you have your, your hand up? But we don't hear you, your microphone.
I'm sorry, Mayor. No, I did not have my hand up. Thank you.
Oh, okay. I, I thought you did. Sorry. I do want to thank you. And again, I urge everybody to, as soon as a vaccine becomes available, to actually get the vaccine. And that is, and wearing a mask, of course, following simple guidelines, because that is the only way we will get out of this, out of this nightmare. Again, thank you all very much, and we will now move on to public comments, and I believe that will be announced by our city clerk.
This is a time and place for public comments for those wishing to address the city council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. Speakers for public hearing items shall be called and heard during the public hearing. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole. Speakers are requested to state their name and community residence for the record. Under state law, public comment matters may not be considered by the council unless listed on the agenda, but may be referred to the city manager for administrative follow-up. Six individuals have presented cards, which includes the speakers related to the COVID update. And pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Our first speaker, I believe, is Kyle Warbach.
I'm here. Hi, Mayor.
Good evening. Good evening. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Bill de la Peña, councilmembers, city staff, Thousand Oaks residents, and Sheriff Ayub. Many of you, if not all, ran campaign, campaigns with two words at the top of your walk pieces, Facebook pages, and websites, public safety. You told us, your electorate, the public safety was your number-one priority. So it is particularly concerning that we're here tonight in the middle of a dangerous pandemic with a completely full ICU, three hundred and fifty-one deaths in this county, and a refrigerator truck parked at Las Robles to accommodate the bodies of those who have yet to lose their lives. And yet, for some, the simplest act of safety, wearing a mask, remains optional, which, to be clear, it is not. And this county's primary public safety entity, the Ventura County Sheriff's Office, seems uninterested in protecting us on this matter. So why is it that literally down the street from your offices, restaurants remain open to diners and doors? Why is it that actors can summon hundreds of people to private property for the sole purpose of disobeying the mask mandate? And why is it that throngs of individuals can enter the grocery store with an intent to intimidate its employees and put them in harm's way? Which, by the way, is not protesting. Mr. Powers just said that we have to assume that everyone has COVID. So entering a store intentionally without a mask is an intent to do harm. And why is it that in each one of those examples, those who actively chose to do harm to others face no consequences for their actions? What I've heard tonight is that because it's complicated. And yet, your job, particularly to the city council, is to handle the complicated. Last April or even May was the time for learning and solving. Yet June, July, August, September, October, November, and December, the deadliest month yet, have come and gone, and this community sees nothing being done about the very thing you promised all, us all from the beginning that you would protect, our safety. There's no longer time for marginal action. Your weekly Instagram post reminding three thousand followers to wear a mask is not enough. And I hear you when you say it's a complicated web and that enforcement is difficult. I respond by saying that this city spends millions of dollars by hiring the Sheriff's Office to protect us, and they are paid to do the difficult work, and the numbers show that they are failing. It's time that you demand that they do their job, pass a city ordinance that requires enforcement, at minimum, hold public forums weekly about what you're doing to help the community. I don't know, and I'm clearly frustrated because I don't know what that right solution is. But to be honest, it's not my job. It's yours. And as a resident, a taxpayer, and a voter, I'm not asking, I'm demanding. Now is the time for bold and significant correction. I understand that this is difficult, forcing all of us into discussions and actions that we would rather not take. And to that, I will leave you with a quote from President John F. Kennedy. He said, "There are costs and risks to a program of action, but they are far less than the long-range risks and costs of comfortable inaction." This city has long prided itself as one of the safest in the nation. It's time that we start acting like it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warbach. Our next speaker is Sally Hibbits.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Good evening.
Okay, thank you. My question is actually a question that was meant for Agenda Item Five. So it was directed more to Sheriff Ayub, and I hope that he's able to answer it directly. But first of all, I want to thank Mayor Bill de la Peña for organizing and helping expedite a presentation like this. It's certainly timely and very important for our community. Numerous, and not to Sheriff Ayub, sorry. Numerous community members have expressed concern about why our Ventura County deputies do not demonstrate better compliance with the mask mandate while on duty. Sheriff Ayub and I have, and had an email exchange on August the twenty-fifth regarding this issue, and I have yet to be aware of any improvement by deputies regarding this issue. Given the fact that we have all recently seen countless videos of the very brave Capitol Hill police officers, Secret Service, and other agents while in the line of duty and in very difficult circumstances, many of them were wearing masks. I find it very hard to believe that our own Ventura Sheriff's deputies cannot be better examples for our community. I find it very hard to believe that our own Ventura sheriff's deputies cannot be better examples for our community. I've observed other California police agencies doing a much better job than we are with this mandate. I would like to know specifically from the sheriff, what immediate steps will his department take to require officers to wear masks in order to help reduce our community spread, including wearing the mask outdoors? Thank you very much.
Thank you. I believe we don't have any additional public speakers. Madam Clerk, would that be correct? I'm sorry, I think we do have Adam Haverstock.
Yes.
Okay, and I believe he is the last one.
I believe Nisa is on a phone call as well.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I apologize.
Continue with Adam Haverstock.
Sarah Nisa is not speaking. Sorry, Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Haverstock.
Hello, Madam Mayor, council members. Adam Haverstock, I'm the Director of Government Affairs and Tourism at the Greater Canejo Valley Chamber of Commerce with an update for you this evening with several items to discuss. First, I wanted to let you know the chamber has been actively working to provide access to financial support recently made available by local, state and federal government. This includes PPP funding, including the second draw funds, idle loans and grants, including the targeted idle loans, the employee retention tax credit and the California Small Business COVID-19 Relief Grant, which by the way, the deadline to submit for that is tomorrow. We've also been helping businesses understand the state and local COVID guidance so they can stay in compliance with health order mandates. We have sent out several advisories to the business community following updates to the regional stay home order. We have a COVID-19 FAQ on our website and we answer phone calls and emails every day about how to follow the guidance. At the chamber, we believe that slowing the spread of COVID-19 is what's best for business. And it's what will ultimately get businesses back open. We are partnering with the U.S. Chamber of Commerce to help businesses get access to the recently passed stimulus package. We actually have an event coming up this Thursday. It is a stimulus package Q and A webinar. And we have Jennings Amell, who is the Executive Director of the Western Region for U.S. Chamber of Commerce, talking about the stimulus package and answering questions. This event is free and open to the public. All businesses are invited to attend and all the details to log into it, it's going to be a Zoom. It, it's at canehochamber.org, which is our website. The chamber has a new partnership with LinkedIn and we plan to have several events with them this year. The first is a virtual class on getting the most out of your LinkedIn profile. It's called Rock Your LinkedIn Profile and it's being taught by Joey Zumaya from LinkedIn. It's going to be next Wednesday, January 20th at 10:30 in the morning and it's virtual. And it's free and open to all businesses, job seekers, LinkedIn users, anyone who wants to improve their LinkedIn. And there's, you need to sign up on the chamber website, canehochamber.org. I want to have you all save the date for Canejo Valley Restaurant Week, which is going to be the last week in February, specifically February 19 through the 28th. We're currently seeking Thousand Oaks restaurants that want to participate. They do not need to be a member of the chamber, but they do need to provide a two-person or four-person to-go special so that way people can frequent their business during that week. And you can sign up at caneho.com to participate if you are a restaurant. And finally, the chamber is resuming its virtual mixers in 2021. The first one is going to be Wednesday, January 27th at 4:00 PM. It is sponsored by Oak and Iron. It's a virtual event and they're going to feature cocktail demonstrations and info to access that virtual mixers on our website at canehochamber.org. And unless there are any questions, that does conclude my comments this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haverstock. I actually do have a question for you for your restaurant tasting event. Are you including restaurants or inviting restaurants who are currently in violation of the COVID guidelines issued by Ventura and the state of California?
That is a great question. No, we are not including restaurants that are not following the state and local health order mandates.
That's very good to hear. Thank you so much. Any other questions or comments? None. Okay. Thank you. Then we will move on to item number seven, which is the consent calendar. Are there any items that anyone would like to pull?
Adam, Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
Yeah, I would just like to have a little more information on Item F. The financial report, please.
Item F? Anything else?
Like to pull 7D.
7D? Very good. And if there are no additional items to be pulled, could I please have a motion to approve the remainder of the consent calendar?
I'll move to, to approve the remainder, please.
Okay, then Madam Clerk, could we please vote on this?
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Mcnamie?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Engler?
Yes.
Mayor Bill De La Peña?
Yes.
And that motion carries 5-0.
We will start with Councilmember Adam and Item D.
Yeah, I just wanted to briefly highlight 7D. It's just another good example of the city's active transportation plan to make biking and walking more safe in the city of Thousand Oaks. This will create a bike and walking path between our, our transportation center and the Thousand Oaks Boulevard, which is an ideal path to create. And most importantly, and we're going to discuss this in a later agenda item, it's just one more way to lower greenhouse gases, get people out of their cars and on foot. So I applaud the city for this project. And I think it's just going to continue to connect us all and give us the ability to walk and bike. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adam. I do think it's a fabulous project, long in the making, and so very excited to see it happening. Mr. Adam, would you like to move approval?
Yes, please. Move 7D.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Mcnamie?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Engler?
Yes.
And Mayor Bill De La Peña?
Yes.
And that motion carries 5-0.
And now to Councilmember Jones, Item F.
Yeah, the reason I brought this up is I just would like to ask our treasurer, Mrs. Boscarino, if she would comment. We have this chart of the comparison of general fund revenues on page three. And she lists the different taxes and the amounts. Now, I know we've been in the COVID only a few months that is, are covered by this report because it's the fiscal year ending June 30th of last year. But I'm interested in what impact the COVID is having on our city finances. So if she could explain some of these numbers, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember. Yeah, so COVID for the fiscal year 1920 really started impacting city finance revenues in March. Mid-March was the first shutdown. So it was about three and a half months of impact to our revenue sources. Obviously, a, a large impact was our sales tax. We did see, of course, with the stay-at-home order back in March, a decline in sales tax revenue. Thankfully, we budgeted for a decline in that fiscal year. So despite COVID, we actually ended up meeting our budgeted sales tax revenue. And that's our largest revenue source for the city's general fund. Although we had a decline in areas like restaurants and fuel stations, we saw upticks in other areas throughout the city in our sales tax. The movement to online brought a huge increase in revenue for the city from online sales. People were also, since they were staying home, doing a lot of home improvement projects. So we saw increases at, you know, Home Depot lows. So although we did see declines in certain categories, we saw large increases in other categories that helped offset the losses. So yes, we did see a decline in what we were trending for the fiscal year in our sales tax, but we ended up meeting budget anyways. We also saw a decline in transient occupancy tax. People weren't traveling to hotels, so our hotels lost revenue, which meant we saw decline in our transient occupancy tax revenue as well. But thankfully, it was pretty much just the transient occupancy tax based on the point of year and sales tax. And so despite the COVID closures back in March, we actually exceeded our general fund revenue budget.
I see that we had two areas where we had a, quite a hefty increase in property tax and in what is termed other revenue. Could you explain those two increases?
Property tax, the majority of that increase from the prior fiscal year was due to a one-time payment we received from the county of Ventura. For those of you that don't know, the city actually incorporated without a general municipal property tax. So we actually get a tax equity allocation percentage from the county of Ventura. And there was a case that was challenged in a different county and ultimately resolved last fiscal year where the county assessor's office lost the case that they were improperly calculating the tax equity allocation. So our assessor, of course, had to adhere to the terms of the case. And they actually did a one-time reassessment for the past three years for statute of limitations. So we got a one-time payment of over $3 million from the county and property tax revenue. So we won't see that one-type payment obviously moving forward. But that, the bulk of that accounts for the increase in the property tax. And the other revenue, of course, we received last fiscal year, our settlement proceeds from Edison for the Woolsey fire, and that was over $3 million. So that was the bulk of the increase in the other revenue.
Mr. Jones? I don't see him in our.
Claudia, I know his, I know his battery was running low. They could see it on the screen. So they're just attempting to contact him so he can.
Okay, very good. I imagine, I have to suppose that this answered his question. And I will call for a vote. Madam Clerk?
Can we get a, a motion for this item?
We do need a motion first. Mr. Adam?
Move 7F.
Thank you.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones is absent. Councilmember Mcnamie?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Engler?
Yes.
And Mayor Bill De La Peña?
Yes.
And that motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. We will now move to a public hearing, Item 8. And this is for a new location for Leaf Medical Marijuana Dispensary. I am opening the public hearing and will now toss it over to Calvin Parker, our new community development director. Hello. Oh, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, you do have to announce it. Yes.
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider Agenda Item 8A regarding consideration of new location for Leaf Dispensary. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. 14 individuals have presented speaker cards and pursuant to council standards, each speaker will have three minutes.
Thank you very much. Now, Mr. Parker?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. This item is back before city council with a new location. Some of you may remember it from being before council a couple of times before. This evening, we will have a PowerPoint presentation that will be presented and led by our Assistant City Attorney Patrick Heer and Mar Jean from the Community Development Department. And with that, I will turn it over to Mar Jean.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council members. We are here tonight to talk about Leaf Dispensary's proposed location. Also, just want to introduce quickly Matt Eaton from HDL Consultants and Assistant Attorney Patrick Heer, who are also available tonight to answer questions. Tonight, staff is asking you to consider Leaf Dispensary's newly proposed location at 3321 Grande Vista. And if acceptable, consider authorizing city manager to enter into an operations agreement with Leaf. First, a quick background on some of the key events. On November 14, 2017, based on requests from citizens of Thousand Oaks and over two years of analysis and research, the city council voted to approve two cannabis dispensaries and two testing labs. And the two cannabis dispensaries for medical use only. I'm sorry, I have a, I'm having issue with. Okay. So no other types of cannabis businesses were to be, would be allowed. This decision. Sorry, I'm. Bear with me. I'm really sorry. I'm just having trouble with my PowerPoint here. Okay, so this decision was based in part on a demonstrated need of medical cannabis for treatment of certain ailments. The ordinance implemented Medicinal and Adult Use Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act in addition to requirements specific to our city to protect the residents such as annual review of the permits and giving council discretion to reject the permit if the operator does not follow regulations. In July of 2018, council selected Legendary Organics as city's first medical dispensary. And in September 2019, council authorized Leaf Dispensary to operate the second dispensary business. In April of this year, council evaluated Leaf's proposed location at 2360 Towns Gate Road and denied it. Council then encouraged Leaf to seek a new location for their dispensary. And Leaf subsequently submitted an application for a new location at 3321 Grande Vista Drive, which is being discussed tonight. So the first step in the cannabis review process is location certification. Staff certified the new location for proper zoning and proper buffer from sensitive uses. Cannabis facilities must be located in the M1 zone, which is industrial, and must comply with the state mandated 600-foot radius from sensitive uses such as kindergarten through 12th grade schools, arcades, boys and girls club, et cetera. Following the certification, the certification of the location, city, city's consultant verified that the proposed location meets city and state's other requirements and standards. Cannabis businesses are only considered for approval in the M1 zone. As mentioned earlier, the proposed location is in an M1 zone. Sensitive uses such as schools, youth centers, daycare facilities and houses must be at least 600 feet away from a cannabis business. In this case, there is one residentially zoned property within 600 feet of the proposed location. However, for a residentially zoned property to be current, to be, zone property to be designated as a sensitive use, the code requires the property to be currently used as a residential property at, at the time that the cannabis business is being considered. This residential property is currently vacant and not being used as residential. In addition, it is designated as undevelopable in the general plan, in the general plan precisely because of its steep hillside terrain. Therefore, it is unlikely that this property would ever be developed for residential use. Today, an inquiry was received questioning the applicability of the code to the proposed location and the relationship of it to the residentially vacant lot. Although on paper, the property is designated as residential, under the code, it's not considered a sensitive use since it's vacant and unlikely to be developed as a result of its terrain and designation. So I'm just going to show you the, some photos of the proposed dispensary. This is the front entry of the proposed location as entered from Grande Vista. This slide shows the side view looking south. This slide shows the side view looking south. This is the rear elevation of the west, looking west. And this picture is a simplified interior of the building and how it will be divided. The secure check-in lobby area is here, where clients will be received and their IDs and medical certificates checked before entering the sales area. And this picture is the interior rendering of the dispensary. It shows how the products will be displayed. There are many restrictions that are placed on medical dispensaries in our city to protect the residents and the dispensary staff. Some of these restrictions are noted on this slide. Of course, the dispensary will be medical only. Hours of operation are limited to 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM with a buzzin' entry system. And delivery of cannabis will be limited to medical marijuana and measures have to be made to ensure odor control. There will be a security personnel dedicated to guarding the dispensary and loitering will be strictly prohibited. A neighborhood meeting was held on December 17, 2020. Notices were sent to all the property owners within 600 feet of Leaf's new location, inviting them to attend the meeting if they so desired. And that was to discuss concerns and neighborhood compatibility. Four individuals attended the virtual meeting, which had concerns regarding misdirected patrons who may enter the wrong driveway, lack of sufficient parking, and concerns about sufficient security. So I'm just going to respond to some of these. Regarding the possibility of patrons taking the wrong driveway, staff believes this will not likely be an issue since Leaf is located in the higher lot that serves 3315 to 3321 Grande Vista. And the building of the concerned party is at the lower lot, which serves 3235 to 3241 Grande Vista. These two lots are accessed by two separate, non-connecting driveways. Therefore, there's no internal connection from one level of the complex to the other. The driveways are separated by a distance of approximately 250 feet and also separated by vegetation and grade level. The proposed dispensary's parcel is at a higher elevation than the other parcel. And regarding the parking concerns, staff's calculations show that there are 24 available spaces for this particular building and only 22 will be required. And finally, regarding the security measures, staff and our consultant H from HDL have verified that all required security measures will be adhered to. So on December 22, 2020, staff from Community Development Department and City Attorney's Office and also Sheriff's Department met with the applicants from Leaf. Again, it was concluded that safety and security measures that Leaf is proposing are adequate. And staff also concluded that Leaf's new location meets all city and state requirements, including parking. So just a quick summary of how we got to this point. Of course, city council adopted a thorough, methodical, and transparent review process to allow medical cannabis dispensaries. If approved, the applicant must renew the permit annually, which gives us another opportunity to evaluate the business that is being conducted and making sure that there, it's being conducted according to standards. Staff and consultants reviewed the proposal. Staff conducted a neighborhood meeting and a site inspection to ensure ordinances and policies were all followed. Council tonight can also weigh potential negative impacts the proposed use at the site would have on health, safety, and welfare of surrounding businesses. Council has the right to reject any and all applications if it determines it would be in the best interest of the city. Applicant does not have a right to a business permit until council approves the dispensary at the proposed location. In conclusion, staff is asking council, who has complete discretion, to vote on Leaf's new site at 3321 Grande Vista Drive. And if approved, authorize city manager to enter into an operations agreement with Leaf Dispensary. This concludes staff's presentation. Staff and consultant are available for questions. Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Bizadi. Appreciate the presentation. Are there questions? Mr. Engler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, just a question on possible confusion of people accessing the area, going to the wrong building. Will there be signage on, on Leaf here to help people find the proper location?
Councilmember Wrangler, as far as signage, just to remind all council that we are very restrictive in the signage that we allow for cannabis businesses. So they are allowed to have their name on the building or their, their actual front of their building itself, but no other types of signs for the business. As far as the park is concerned, that would be controlled by the POA or the Professional Owners Association's requirements there for the signage. I think they only have addresses and numbers, obviously not names. But that would be something that maybe David McFarlane could answer as part of the owner of this Leaf Dispensary.
Just, thank you, Mr. Heher. I, I, I did remember that they're not allowed to have advertising-type signage.
Correct.
But I just wanted to make sure that they were able to put at least their business name on the outside to help any confusion.
That is correct. They can.
Mr. McNamie?
Thank you, Mayor. Question regarding the parking, just to be assured here that adequate parking is provided for the patrons. I've spoken to other businesses that have been around both recreational marijuana facilities as well as the medical marijuana facilities. And unfortunately, the parking was not sufficient. And those with non-cannabis businesses had to close and move elsewhere because of it. What are we doing as far as a contingency plan to necessitate enough parking so the other businesses are not impacted?
So I know Mr. McFarlane can speak more to this issue, but we did evaluate the parking and Ms. Bizadi can, of course, answer that in more detail. The parking requirements for this location is 14 spaces and they meet that requirement. But in, in a concern for making sure they had enough parking and, and to ensure that they did not have an impact to their neighbors. They've also arranged to have additional parking through an agreement with another owner of the complex for any excess parking that is needed. As a final possibility, currently, there's signage on the street adjacent to this property that does not permit parking. But in talking to Public Works, it is possible that they could change the signage just west of this location where the driveway is to allow parking, but prohibit parking, I should say, between 3:00 AM and 6:00 AM. That way, you prevent overnight parking, but you can certainly allow parking there on the street, which is pretty close to this proposed location.
Excellent, thank you. One other, more of a question for council members is that medicinal use of marijuana in the, research literature has come out since this first was introduced at a, to the voters statewide, has shown that there is benefit to some medicinal conditions and should be made available as the voters have put forth in the state of California. Unfortunately, that's thrust upon the cities on how to regulate and how to monitor and make this available to the people. My contention has always been that marijuana should not be a class or a Schedule I, should not be a Schedule I drug right there with crystal meth, heroin, and LSD, but should be moved to a Schedule III drug. So that way, it's dispensed by a healthcare practitioner that has the ability to write the licensing, dispensed by the pharmacies that have been doing it for other drugs, and then regulated by the California Board of Pharmacy. So that way, we jump into the mechanism that's there. So this takes the burden away from the cities from having to work and finagle and figure this out. The people of Thousand Oaks had a vote put towards them, asking, do you want to have recreational marijuana facilities and also medical marijuana facilities? And the people voted yes, we do want to have medical marijuana, but not recreational use. My request to all of the council is to consider approaching on the Washington DC legislators, politicians, regulators level to see about moving it from a Schedule I to a Schedule III so it frees cities up to do what they do best and not have to go through what the Board of Pharmacy would do in the state of California. And this would come down under our Congresswoman Julia Bromley's domain and see if she would champion this through in Washington and make this change. So that way, we get some relief here on the city level on how to figure this out. The people have spoken, they want to have medical marijuana dispensaries. And as far as I'm concerned, Leaf has actually fulfilled all the requirements of the city and will move forward as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McNamie.
I could respond to Councilmember McNamie's request regarding the legislative efforts on behalf of the city. That's certainly something that we can look at when we're looking at our legislative platform or our goal setting. However, it is not on the agenda tonight, just for the council's information.
And if I may, Madam Mayor, just looking at the federal work that's being done, again, this is 2019, 2020. There was a number of, two actual bills. One's called the State Act and one is called, or the State's Act, and one is called the Moore Act. And both of those were proposals to, in some way, either de-schedule or change the scheduling of the drug as Councilmember McNamie just suggested, from a Schedule I drug to their Schedule III or Schedule V drug. And those two bills, I, I checked the status of them. It seems like they just died based on COVID issues because it was going into the 2020 season. So again, with the new President-elect Biden and one of the bills was actually proposed by Vice President-elect Harris, the Moore Act. So I would suspect that there might be new legislation proposed in the federal level any, anytime the next year for this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Heher. That's a good information to have. Let's see, are there any other questions from council? I don't see anything. We can then move to our speakers and we do have several. Just for the record, I think we did have two ex parte communications where the, another dispensary contacted two council members regarding tonight's agenda item. All right, our first applicant really is Dave McFarlane. And he will have 15 minutes to present. And I believe Mr. McFarlane is joining us via video.
I'm here, can you hear me?
There you are, yes, good evening.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Good evening, Mayor, good evening, good evening, council members and staff. Nice to see you all again. I've spoken to everyone here on numerous occasions. And I, first, I'd like to congratulate and welcome Councilmember McNamie to the council. My name is David McFarlane and I'm representing the Leaf Dispensary Group. Unfortunately, my partner Paul Burns is unable to attend tonight's meeting due to being hospitalized for an appendix issue. But I'm glad to report that he's doing fairly well and he's on the road to recovery. So we're all praying for him on that. And he, he's really upset that he was able, that he wasn't able to make the meeting tonight. So I'm here to address and answer any questions and concerns for the proposed location at 3321 Grande Vista Drive. As you know, and I've heard, the staff and HDL have reviewed this location. They have certified it and it meets all requirements. Paul and I feel this, this is a, this is a perfect location. It's located in a remote M1 zone off the beaten path. And I believe when the council passed the ordinance requiring us to be in an M1 zone, I think this is kind of what they had in mind, you know, something not in the central city. So we're, we're happy with the location. The citizens of the community will be able to, to get their medicine in Thousand Oaks rather than have to travel outside the city. That'll, that'll be a benefit. So in my 13 years of being a dispensary operator in the Santa Barbara County, our patients rely on us for safe access to their medicine. Cannabis provides relief to those who are ill, who have everyday pain, anxiety, arthritis, lupus, multiple sclerosis, sleping orders, and the list goes on and on. I want to point out too, California has deemed cannabis as an essential business. People rely on this as medicine and they deserve to have access to it. So we're happy to bring it to them. This location will provide safe access and it'll be a benefit to the community, as I've already said. And Paul, Paul and I are, are ready to get this open. We've been talking about it for a long time. We hope the council feels the same way about the location. To save time, rather than have, we have a lot of support behind us. So rather than have, you know, 50 callers call in, we encourage them to send emails to the supplemental package. So I hope that you had a chance to review those because I, last count, we had 51 submissions in our favor. And I realize there's some opposition to, there's a few people opposing it. And I understand that. And my years of being in the business, I mean, that's, that's not unusual. So. Let's see, yeah. One thing I want to point out in the, in the package too, on page eight, if you get a chance to look at it, if you had a chance, CNH Construction, who is our neighbor. And when I say neighbor, we have adjoining wall with them. We're, we're sharing the same building. Half of the building is theirs, half of it is ours. So I'm pleased to, to say that they have given us full support and they've welcomed us. So with that, I don't have a whole lot more. I don't want to take too much time up. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Mr. McFarlane. Are there any questions? Mr. Engler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Nice to see you again, Mr. McFarlane. I think the last time we spoke, your beard may have been a little bit darker, but good to see you again.
Yes, it was. Right.
I'm, there's, there's some discussion on the parking issue and whether there's sufficient parking. Apparently, the city has determined that there is sufficient parking. Can you give me a feel for the type of volume in terms of people in your store at any particular time? It's more of a, an appointment-type business rather than a drop-in business, is that, is that my understanding?
Well, thank you for your question. It, it, it is not an appointment business. It is open, you know, during business hours to anybody. But what I can tell you is, with my experience, we don't have like a mad rush of patients that come at one particular time. Everyone has, you know, their schedule. So we see like just a, an even, even flow of customers coming and going. Our Galita location has been there 13 years and we only have three parking spots. And we have never had one problem. We've never had a complaint from our neighbors. We've never had a loitering. We, we have operated without a single complaint for 13 years. So part of that is, is having a communication with our neighbors, making sure that we, we listen to them and, and they have, they have my phone number directly. And if there's, if there's a concern or something that's bothering them, we would address it immediately. So we typically see maybe six to 10 people an hour, you know? And that's during rush hour. You know, sometimes we'll go an hour or more without even anybody coming, depending on their day. So we've never had an issue with parking. Same with Lompok, I only have four or five parking spots there. And, and both of my facilities are medical and recreational in the Santa Barbara County. So, so you, so you get a little more flow that way, but it hasn't been a problem.
Thank you very much.
Question, please?
Yes, I'm sorry, my microphone. Mr. Adam?
Thank you. Yeah, we did, pardon me, we did do away with the appointment requirement at a session in the past, I can't remember exactly when, to ensure, you know, more freer access to medicinal marijuana facility. And it would seem to me, I mean, you do intend to deliver, correct?
Yes, not right out, right out of the gate, but eventually, yeah, we're going to get deliveries going as well.
Yeah, it would seem to me if you're delivering, that would cut, cut some of the personal visits down, would it not?
It certainly has. And deliveries, deliveries, deliveries have become much more popular since COVID. So we also have, we also have a lot of phone-in orders that are coming. So we prepare the order before. So we also have a lot of phone-in orders that are coming, so we prepare the order before they get there, so their visit is relatively quick, they're in and out in several minutes, rather than sitting around. Because our website, our menu, it has all of our products, it has all the information they need, they can ask us questions, they can call our staff. So we can eliminate a lot of the traffic by them doing the online ordering and delivery.
Good, I could see that, thank you.
Mr. McNamee?
Just to follow up on the question that was just posed regarding deliveries, one of the challenges on delivery is people coming into the city of Thousand Oaks to make a marijuana delivery that's not a business located here as in bricks and mortar. And we have no way of tracking the sales tax or the business tax on that particular delivery. Now, you have several facilities and other locations around the state. What's your experience with deliveries coming in, competing with your business within the cities that you have current brick and mortar locations?
The, are you talking, okay.
That's for you, David.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Yeah, that's always been a problem. I mean, the illegal deliveries that take place, that aren't licensed, that don't sell tested products, I mean, it's an ongoing problem in our industry. So slowly but surely, the so-called illegal deliveries and services and the ones that don't do it correctly are limited to getting all the products that we get that are tested and sealed. And all the major manufacturers now have, you know, taken precautionary steps to make sure that they don't want to risk their license. And so their supply is slowly running out and people are aware of that.
Any thoughts or ideas on how we as a city can protect our businesses as well as the revenue that is rightly due our city and our residents?
That's a really good question. I mean, I remember former Police Chief Hagel mentioned that they had done several, like 10 or maybe 15 sting operations where it's relatively easy to weed them out, because most of them advertise on the cannabis directories. So what they do is they call and set up a delivery from an out-of-city delivery service and then when they get there, they show them the law.
Excellent, thank you.
Perhaps Mr. Heer can chime in about enforcement of the deliveries out of town. In fact, we have gone after businesses and cited businesses who are not filing a license.
Mayor, if I might jump in there, just really quickly on a couple of points regarding enforcement because Chief Fryoff is on the line as well. Mr. McFarlane is correct in that we were the first city in the county to really start forcefully pushing for enforcement when the state allowed for deliveries to begin occurring. And part of that was to ensure compliance with both our business license practice and our taxation that was approved by the voters. And so as a result of that, you know, Ms. Boscarino just gave me an estimate of last year's collections, I believe it was in the neighborhood of $50,000 collected from deliveries that occurred from outside of the area, because we do not have any dispensaries in Thousand Oaks and coming in to deliver product in Thousand Oaks. Chief Fryoff, perhaps you can speak to the enforcement without giving away the specifics of the tactics utilized, but the important thing here is seeking compliance, compliance with both our business license and with our remittance of taxation.
I'm ready to speak, I'm just waiting for myself, there we go. So yes, Mayor, council members, Mr. Powers, yes, we do have a process in place to continue to do our operations, our sting operations, to make sure that those that are operating and delivering within the city of Thousand Oaks have a proper permit and also are from licensed dispensaries, both. Obviously, there's multiple concerns, it was mentioned by the applicant about the unlicensed dispensaries that are doing deliveries, perhaps spreading products that have not been tested, that are not deemed safe, that are truly black market items. And so there's an effort on both sides of this to ensure compliance, protect the local businesses, protect all those that are lawfully doing the, when the vote is approved. And we do it in a manner that is going to ensure or gain compliance. And also, we did receive notice of the dispensaries that are paying their taxes and that do have their permits. And so when we look at the directory, we know which targets we're going to be looking for to gain compliance from.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate that. Are there any other questions? I have a question from Mr. Mc, actually for staff. Last time we discussed this medicinal marijuana business, we were not going to have any deliveries. And now I hear that we will have deliveries, where did that change? Did I miss something?
I think in the last presentation we had, we realized that we changed our ordinance to allow deliveries from outside sources. So I believe the consensus of the council at that time was to allow these two local businesses, again, the two medical dispensaries, to deliver medical marijuana or medical cannabis only.
I see, was that last year or was that in 19?
Could have been actually 2019.
Okay, it seems so long ago. Okay, so that was the question that I had. Another question that I also had was that the, another dispensary owner was asking the question, and I see it in the supplemental packet, an email thread about, excuse me, mortgage insurance of that building. Can you speak to that, Mr. McFarlane?
The owner of the building has assured us that there is no mortgage on the property whatsoever. He owns it outright and we have it in writing. I believe Paul submitted it to Marjan or part of our package. But we have, I mean, because of the problems we've had with the mortgage, we made sure 100% that it is mortgage-free and we are not going to have that problem here.
Thank you so much. If there are no further comments, I will then call the first speaker, who is Michael Riley. And he's joining us here via video. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Michael Riley and I'm the CEO of Integrity Bio and we're located in the same business park as the proposed site for this retail cannabis operation. I'd like to object to the proposed location for four reasons. Number one, the proposed location is actually 472 feet away from my neighbor, the Living Oaks Church, which runs a youth center and private education for children. This is closer than the 600-foot minimum the regulations require. And I have no idea why the city consultants didn't find this, but I can provide the GPS measurements if needed or you can do it yourself. And I have no idea if the Living Oaks Church is aware of this proposal at all. Number two, my company moved to this complex eight years ago to be part of a growing biotech industrial park, not neighbors with a retail cannabis outlet. So we don't think of this as a corner of Thousand Oaks that's away from everything. We in fact started our business in Thousand Oaks in 2003 and since then, we've grown to 110 people. We've invested heavily in our laboratory and manufacturing sites and now are the fourth largest biotech employer in Ventura County. Companies like ours attract further investment and now there are multiple biotech companies in this part of the industrial park. You know, our business benefits from a location with a reputation for biotech and this proposed outlet would impact that negatively. Number three, we expect this to drive unwanted dispensary traffic to our business despite what the city had looked at. And we're a longtime tenant of this complex, we have firsthand experience, like probably nobody in this room, that the limited signage causes people to take the wrong driveway since we're the first one in the county. And with signage limited to the address number, people frankly can't tell the difference between 3401 or 3321. And for years, the post office traffic has ended up not only in our parking lot, but people entering our facility until multiple signs were posted on Grande Vista to help people find their way. Nevertheless, people still make this mistake on a regular basis despite the parking lot not being connected. And there's no reason to believe that the cannabis customers and suppliers will behave any differently. Our employees work after hours and the retail cannabis operation is planned to be open until 9:00 PM, when the signage is even less clear. And with a large cash operation around the corner, I don't feel my employees will be safe. Leaf has promised guards and gates to protect their business, but that sure doesn't do much for the safety of our employees, while it does indicate the risk of this business model for those around it. Fourth, circumstances have changed since 2017, when the council approved an ordinance and Leaf started considering alternative sites. As discussed just before me, according to the site Weed Maps, there are now 20 retail delivery services in Thousand Oaks. So really, access to medical marijuana is already insured. Access, when I looked at the materials that were provided for this meeting, it says that Leaf also wants the option to expand at some point to an adult-use retail business, which would drive even more traffic. This is a quiet industrial park and to my knowledge, Leaf has not done any impact study on projected sales and traffic for medical use, let alone recreational use.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Thank you. Our second speaker via teleconference is Trish Rasmussen. Good evening.
Hi, good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening, City Council, thank you for taking this time to hear from me. And I'd like to speak on behalf of Leaf Dispensary. I'd like to give you a very, very short, brief history of myself. I moved to the Kaneha Valley in 1986. I've lived here very happily for many, many years. My husband owns a business in Thousand Oaks, we live in Agora, my parents live in Westlake. Sadly, my father passed on December 4th this past year. He was in excruciating pain, OxyContin that he was prescribed for bone cancer did nothing to touch his cancer. The only thing that helped him was medicinal marijuana. I had to leave the beautiful Kaneha Valley to go and scrounge for medicinal marijuana for my father. I am a community member, I am a business owner, I am a taxpayer, it is time to let Leaf open their business. The community has requested and begged you. It has been years of this man, who is an amazing human, being given the runaround to open his business in this city. I would hope this evening, if you had any further questions, that would prevent Dave from opening his business, that is necessary, that you would ask them tonight and move forward with opening his doors. He is a great asset to this community. Thank you for your time and I wish you all a Happy New Year.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker via video conference is Sarah Armstrong. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. I am Sarah Armstrong, Director of Industry Affairs for Americans for Safe Access. I'm also a 22-year resident of Thousand Oaks. Founded in 2002, Americans for Safe Access is the oldest and largest national organization advocating on behalf of medical cannabis patients. We began this process in 2017. The actors who wish to open a dispensary are blemish-free and totally dedicated to the idea that they wish to be good partners with the city. I take exception to Mr. Riley's remarks. The delivery services he is talking about are largely illegal, unregulated, unlicensed, and they do not test their products. Over and over again, investigative journalists have purchased these products and tested them and found them to be poisonous, so very poisonous. The cure to this is to open up a shop here in Los Angeles, here in Thousand Oaks, that is deeply committed to safe access, tested products sold in a safe, clean location. And for those who are too sick to come to the dispensary, a delivery service. These good actors have persevered for three long years. And some of us have been waiting for safe access in Thousand Oaks from the time the Compassionate Use Act was passed in 1996. Now, we have the perfect alignment of good actors with plenty of parking and a deep commitment to the city and to the city residents. If the council approves this tonight, you will begin a process that will greatly benefit patients and the community. And I promise you, I have 16 years' experience in cannabis policy, I've visited hundreds of dispensaries, and I've listened to police talk about this process, including Los Angeles, which is a high crime rate. The chief of police there many years ago stood up and said that the legal licensed dispensaries in his community generated no police calls and were infinitely safer than banks or 7-Elevens. I believe that David and Paul are sincere in their wish to bring safe access to this community. And for all of, including those who are too sick to come out tonight and talk to you about it, I hope that you do the right thing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Armstrong. Next up is Lisa Aronson. Good evening.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Lisa Aronson, I moved to Thousand Oaks in 1975. I am for Leaf's new location. Leaf Dispensary is a positive and vital need for our community's health and well-being. Leaf's new location has been chosen following every guideline accordance with the city of Thousand Oaks. The community has agreed that not only does Leaf bring a high quality and value to their patients with illness such as cancer, arthritis, insomnia, heart disease, eating disorders, and much more, Leaf is valuable to all, especially in this serious pandemic. Leaf has all surrounding communities in favor of a local and professional place to pick up our medication as traveling is limited and not always convenient. Leaf is a very well-respected, for over 12 years of excellence, and welcome to the Thousand Oaks community. Good health creates strength, strength creates a stronger community for Thousand Oaks, Leaf is doing just that. They're helping the sick become strong. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Next up, Jen Campbell. Good evening.
Good evening. I also support Paul and Dave and I've been in the Kaneha Valley for 44 years, I have worked in biotech for 28 years, 25 of that being at Amgen. And I'm a mother who suffers from chronic neck pain for decades and I'm a firm believer in these products that are tested and safe. So I hope that we could please finalize this location for our community so that we can get these safe products quickly and conveniently, especially during this pandemic. And it's a great location, thank you.
Thank you very much. Erica Del Olmo is joining us via telephone. Good evening.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, hi, my name's Erica Del Olmo. I am a resident of Thousand Oaks since 1984 and I also am a nurse. I work for a local doctor here in Thousand Oaks and we are a functional and integrative medical facility. We treat patients, all kinds of patients, from cancer, autoimmune disease, we do lupus and Lyme disease and people with digestive issues. And our main focus is to treat patients on things other than pain medication. We have been recommending medical marijuana use for not only pain, but loss of appetite, insomnia, inflammatory issues. We do, and our big issue is that we don't have anywhere we feel good about sending our patients. So basically, we're kind of sending them in blind to figure this out on their So basically, we're kind of sending them in blind to figure this out on their own. What we've been looking for for years now is a safe, clean place where people can go with professional, knowledgeable staff members and we also want to help with the stigma that we're not sending patients who are a bunch of, you know, drug seekers. These are professional members of our society and really just, you know, looking for their medication. So I highly, highly recommend you guys go ahead and pass this so that we have a, a safe place to send our patients. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Chris Trindade by video. Good evening.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you.
You too. We can see you too.
Hi. Uh, my name is Chris Trindade. I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks. Thank you for having me tonight. Mayor, council staff, thank you for your tireless work for the city. I know it's hard. I've been in your, in your position before. You know, I've been following this journey with council since you granted the first dispensary opportunity to Legendary and a second to Leaf. But it's been frustrating for me since neither have opened here in Thousand Oaks. This is a long time coming and it's time for, you know, hopefully we'll make some progress and approve another location for Leaf so one of these guys can open in twenty twenty-one. You know, city staff has vetted this new address. And as, you know, as the public, you know, I perceive that as a green light and it's a go. So I, I think the, the council should vote yes, despite any, any self-serving opposition. I'd, I'd like to, to share a little bit myself because I'm a dispensary customer. Um, and I'll do a little show and tell. You know, when people hear of a cannabis dispensary, I think the immediate perception is that customers of a dispensary are potheads. Or no, we can't have a dispensary within the city because it produces riffraff or bad people hanging around. And this couldn't be further from the truth. I certainly hope I'm not being lumped into that stereotype be, because of my regular customer, because I don't even smoke cannabis. You know, there are many people like me with pain. I suffer from osteoarthritis in both hips. And why I shop at dispensary is to buy balm. So let's see if I can show this.
We can't really see it because of the virtual background.
Okay.
We're assuming you're showing us the balm.
Yeah, it's balm. This is, you know, it's rubbed on my hips, my calves, ankles, and it relieves pain and inflammation in my joints. This balm allows me to sleep and walk better. And as I said, I don't even smoke. But I'm a regular dispensary customer. And this balm is not cheap. At, at a dispensary up in Wynneby, it's a hundred dollars. In L A, it's a hundred and thirty-five dollars. So to be self-serving, I am in support of Leaf's new address and hope council will vote in favor too. And I'll state the obvious, with either location opening, either Legendary or Leaf in twenty twenty-one, I'll be able to buy closer, stay within city limits. And of course, the city will benefit financially. Like Council, ma, Matthew stated, you know, the public voted for medicinal cannabis here. So it's, it's time and, you know, if you, if you have any questions for me, I'm, I'm here for you, but, but I'm, I'm, thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Trinade. Next up, we have Patrick Spillane with the Legendary Organics. Good evening.
Evening, Mayor Di La Peña. Uh, actually, I'm not here to comment on Leaf. I was only uh here to answer any questions about Legendary, should there have been any that came up in the discussion. So I'm not really commenting.
Okay, thank you very much for letting me know. Appreciate it. Then we have, I believe Josh is joining us via phone. And after that, we have Alan via telephone. Is Josh here? No, then let's move to Alan.
Hi, this is Josh.
Oh, hi, Josh.
I'm here.
Good, go ahead.
My name is, uh, good evening, City Council. My name is Josh Jolton. I'm a resident of, uh, of Ventura County. I've lived in Westlake Village in Thousand Oaks, uh, for fifty years. I am a business owner in the community. And um, I'm calling to show my support for Leaf Dispensary. I have known Mr. McFarland through his, uh, dispensary in, uh, Santa Barbara, and he has been a terrific uh, business owner and person to work with through the pains and struggles that I've gone through. Um, he's, the medicinal marijuana has helped me greatly. Um, it's, it's also, uh, affected my life in such a positive way that, uh, like one of the previous callers, using the bombs, um, I have really bad arthritis. And, um, a lot of the cannabis products have, have really changed my life. And I know the location in which Leaf is seeking. And I think it's a terrific location. It's gonna be a real asset to the community. And, um, I'm just calling to show my support and, uh, and David McFarland's operation. It's a class act. And he's, he's just really done miracles for me. So I just wanted to, uh, show my support for his new location. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Alan also via phone. Is Alan joining us?
Hello, can you hear me?
Okay, we hear you. There you are. Very good.
There we go.
Go ahead.
Okay, hi. Yeah, thanks for having me. My name is Alan. I've lived in, uh, Thousand Oaks for over twenty years. And I, I pretty much live with chronic pain from a skiing accident and, uh, I'm just tired of driving into the valley to get my medicinal, uh, cannabis. And, and it, and I did my research with Leaf Dispensary and what a class act place, uh, and I read about it. And I see that Dave really runs it like a true business. And, um, it's a class act, uh, operation. So, and I, and I think the new op, the new location, the Newbury Park would be great. It really would. It would just save me time and, and not only me, and I'm sure just a lot of people. I've been hearing some of the, the comments and what have you. So I kinda, kinda wanna piggyback on those comments as well because it's just a fact. So I, I, uh, I hope that, uh, they, they pass this on and, and the mayor approves it and, and everybody, uh, moves forward with it because I, I think, you know, it'd be a good asset to Thousand Oaks, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, thank you. Next up, we have George Perro, followed by Eric and then Oliver. Good evening, George.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Yeah, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council members, colleagues, and residents of Thousand Oaks. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening on the behalf of Leaf, uh, and the Leaf Dispensary and the ownership group. I personally and professionally have a relationship, uh, with Mr. McFarlane and Mr. Burns. And, uh, with ongoing business dealings with them, um, I find them to be very genuine and authentic in their manner that they conduct their business. Um, I'm very confident that anything that they would commit to and present to the city, to the council members and to the residents of Thousand Oaks, that they would absolutely deliver on. I'm not going to, uh, bore everybody with echoing all the thoughts and comments that have already been presented, both on personal levers, uh, personal levels from people who benefit from medicinal cannabis use as well as all the different benefits that could ultimately come to the community on many, many different levels, but I would like to highlight just, just a few. Hopefully, as it has been discussed and pointed out this evening, that there are some illegal businesses that are delivering products into the community. So with a shop that would open here within the city limits, I would hope that that would have, that would give us the opportunity as a community to help reduce and mitigate those illegal deliveries, if not ultimately eliminate those types of businesses coming into our community. Additionally, I believe that it's a very valuable and much-needed service for the residents that do have ailments that are currently forced to go outside of our city limits to spend their hard-earned money and, uh, in other cities that have already approved medicinal cannabis dispensaries, um, where we could be taking advantage of, uh, of those taxation opportunities. Last and, and certainly not least, if, you know, just observing all the comments happening tonight, all the comments that are coming in for the benefit and to support Leaf Dispensary, um, as well as the presentation for, uh, given by Mr. McFarlane and, uh, and having seen, um, and observed Mr. Burns's presentation on a different meeting. Um, I, I have taken notice that they are, have the best interest of the community. Of course, they are business owners and entrepreneurs. So there is a personal benefit to them economically, but every comment they make is for the benefit of the community. The opposition seems to have a very self-serving interest, which is rather unfortunate. We should look to the benefit of the community, which I believe Leaf Dispensary has, and I support it one hundred percent, being both a resident of Newbury Park and the dispensers community, as well as a business owner in the Thousand Oaks city limits. So thank you for the time to speak tonight. Happy New Year.
Thank you. Next up, we have Eric Van Ace and then Oliver Summers. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Eric Van Ace, uh, Madam Mayor and City Council. Uh, I'm a longtime Ventura County resident, and I'm here to show my support for the Leaf Dispensary. My mother suffers from, uh, back pain, uh, chronic back pain. And unfortunately, she is allergic to every single painkiller available. Every opiate is, you know, something that she cannot take. And, um, cannabis, legal cannabis, has been a lifesaver for her. And instead of having to travel to Los Angeles to pay premiums and put tax dollars in, in their county, I would like to be able to come to the Leaf Dispensary and, uh, take care of, uh, my mother's medicinal needs there and put the tax dollars into Ventura County. I know the operator, uh, the proposed operator, Dave McFarland. And, uh, he's a great individual. I think that the location is fantastic. And I think it'd be a great benefit to the community for many reasons that, uh, were already brought up by other, uh, other people proponents of the Leaf, uh, dispensary. So thank you very much for your time, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak my mind here.
Thank you. Next up, our last speaker, Oliver Summers, joining us via telephone. Good evening.
Good evening. Not to sound like a broken record, but are you able to hear me?
Yes, we are.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Well, good evening, everybody. Uh, my name is Oliver Summers. I am on the Board of Directors of the Southern California Coalition, which is one of the, uh, larger cannabis, uh, compliance groups in the state, as well as one of the founders of the Greater Los Angeles Collective Alliance back in two thousand and seven. So I've been around and, uh, seen quite the many operations in my time and dealt with many, a new town as they build up for safe access. And what more can be said that hasn't already been said for Mr. McFarland and, uh, Leaf? They've been in the execuary operators. I think that the persistence that they've shown and the patience and diligence that they've put into finding the new location after the small setback that they had back in April has shown how they have quite the dedication to Thousand Oaks and that they would be an absolute benefit to the neighborhood and to all those around. And, um, not to, uh, be, be an issue on it, but just the original people that were talking about security and things to that extent. It has been known to show that, uh, through a RAM study a few years ago, that security around dispensaries actually gets increased and the safety around the areas get better. So not only will they not be bringing any issues, but they will actually be making the more area more secure. So again, just wanted to say that these are great people. They've done a great job. I've seen many, many an operator over the time. And they are fantastic and Thousand Oaks should be thankful to have them. And, uh, that's it. Hope you all have a great, happy new year.
Thank you very much. And that was our last speaker. I will now go to staff for any questions, I mean, for, to answer questions or any concerns that were raised.
Yes, Mayor, I wanted to just quickly, uh, respond to Mr. Riley's comment about, uh, the distance between Leaf and the Living Oaks Church. When staff did its, uh, distance evaluation, uh, the church did not show up as being within six hundred feet. And so I quickly went back and looked and I did a measurement um, and saw that, uh, the distance is six, it's more than six hundred feet. It's six hundred and four feet from the front door of Leaf to the property line of where the church is located, which is, um, which is in compliance with the municipal code. That's all. And also, I just wanted to quickly mention that someone mentioned that there's only fourteen parking spaces, um, and that's not accurate. There's twenty-four parking spaces available and only twenty-two are required.
Thank you.
Adam Mayor, I would also state that, um, the gentleman also, the first speaker, mentioned, uh, the youth center, that the church might have a youth center. And again, just as we had for the last meeting, um, a youth center is actually not, um, is, is, is our policy is a youth center is very specifically defined. So we have the Boys and Girls Club or the youth center next door to the Jan's Marketplace, or, excuse me, Jan's Laboratory. Um, the other issue is you mentioned about the time that we changed the ordinance regarding deliveries and it was December tenth of twenty nineteen.
Uh-huh. Thank you. Very good. All right, so going back to, I believe, the applicant, you do have five minutes for rebuttal if you wish.
Thank you very much. I appreciate everybody's comments tonight. I would just like to make a couple of quick comments on Mr. Riley. I understand his concern and I, I thank him for his comments on that. One of my main goals of being a, a successful operator and having no complaints is, is being a good neighbor. Okay, I, I, again, like I said before, I've, I've always have an open communication with my neighbors. I've operated in two different cities, one for thirteen years and one for over two years, and we have had zero complaints, zero problems, zero theft. We haven't had a broken window. We have operated, uh, perfect, perfectly, a, as perfectly as possible. Uh, our cameras, we have cameras that cover every square inch of the property inside and out. Our security system at our, our facility, uh, obviously is state-of-the-art, has motion sensors and vibration sensors and all of that. So, the one thing that I wanted to point out is that he was concerned about people making the wrong turn or going to the wrong driveway. Well, I can say most of our customers that visit our facility for the first time, they, from what I've seen, they use GPS. They use their phones. The, the modern technology nowadays will help eliminate that. And once they've been to the facility once, they won't make the mistake twice, or they won't make that mistake of the, of the driveway. Or if they do, they'll realize they're in the wrong spot because we're, when you turn in our driveway, we are the very first building. So it's gonna be no, no mistake that they could possibly be in the wrong driveway, but I, I don't think that's, that's a problem. And, and one more thing, I just wanted to say, I, I just don't feel that, that our cannabis dispensary is different than any other business that would be going in there. I mean, you know, other businesses could, could create foot traffic and parking and all that. So I don't, I just don't see any difference between us. And like I've said before, and Paul and I both have, have made a pledge and promised to the council, the members of the community, that we will be good neighbors. We will be of benefit to the community. And we look forward to getting this open finally. So that's it.
Thank you very much. Um, before I close the hearing, I would like to give my colleagues the chance to ask any questions of staff or perhaps the applicant or others. Who would like to go first? Nobody's raising his hand. Very good. I will then close the public hearing and then open it up for a discussion.
Mayor.
Mr. Adam.
If I may, thank you. Uh, well, I think we can all see, um, with the experience we've had with Leaf of the past few years, that they are a experienced operator with a good trust, very good trust. that they are an experienced operator with a good trust, very good track record. They're a dedicated business to their philosophy to help people with their product. They offer a very safe and secure facility. There's plenty of parking. It's in a remote location, which was really the criteria that we were looking for above all else, and I think they've satisfied that. And most importantly, as Ms. Armstrong brought up in her remarks, they're offering a product that's safe, that's been tested, that's free of contaminants. And I can't think of anything more important if you're going to offer it on a medicinal basis to someone who's suffering. And I can just ima, and I've read articles where a lot of this marijuana that's being delivered from sources other than someone like a Leaf can have contaminants up to 80, 90% are contaminated. We just can't have that, especially here in Thousand Oaks. So, you know, not to mention the fact that we've got our city attorney approving it, our community development department approving it, and our sheriff's department approving it. So, I think at this point, for me, it goes without saying that I'm looking forward to Leaf operating. I think they're going to do a great job. They're going to offer a really good service to our city. So, I would like to move that we enter an agreement with Leaf at their new location on Grande Vista Drive.
Thank you very much. Mr. Adam, we have a motion. Any questions, comments regarding the motion? Mr. Engler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just, this has been a long time incoming. The, we started this process years ago, and I'm glad to see that our two vendors have stuck with it and are proceeding along. I think I take a somewhat narrow view of our purpose here. Staff has said that is, it complies with all of our qualifications. Our police department says it complies with their qualifications. The, in reviewing the original tape when this was, was decided years ago to go this route for a medical dispensary of cannabis products that I think clearly that most of our speakers talked about the benefit of those products. The overriding concern was location and whether or not that, these products were going to be available to our citizens rather than happen to drive somewhere else, or God forbid, go to a illegal location to buy these products. So, I think Leaf has a track record of being in business, in this business for the last 13 years in two locations. I think they're bringing some expertise into our town. If, the bottom line, though, is if, if there's a problem with their operation there, we do get a chance to revisit it on a regular basis. And there's, the people need to work it out at the, I believe these are business condos, and there's association. If there's problems, there's two remedies. But the ultimate remedy lays with us somewhere down the line if there's issues that come up. So, I would, I would support the, the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Engler. Any other comments? Mr. Jones? No?
Oh, I, I support the motion. I think it's a very good operation, and I wish them Godspeed.
Thank you. All right. If there are no further comments, I will go ahead and ask the city clerk to call for a vote.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember McNamie?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Engler?
Yes.
And Mayor Bill de la Peña?
Yes.
That motion carries 5-0.
Congratulations, Ms. McFarlane. It's taken quite a while. All right. And with that, we will move to item 8B, the municipal code amendment, and I believe...
Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you. We're very pleased.
You're welcome. Item 8B is another public hearing, which I will ask the city clerk to open, please. And then, we will have a presentation by Senior Engineer Jim Mashiko.
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider agenda item 8B regarding municipal code amendment, oversight vehicle parking exceptions with disabled placards and license plates. And Madam Mayor, we currently do not have any speakers on this item.
Thank you. Let me, I'm operating with a different computer here. Thank you. We will now begin with Jim Mashiko.
Okay, yes. Thank you, Mayor, Honorable City Council. My name is Jim Mashiko, Senior Engineer, and with me tonight is Nader Hidari, our City Engineer. The item before you this evening is to consider an ordinance amendment to the oversized vehicle ordinance. The action being proposed is to remove one of the exceptions granted by the ordinance regarding disabled placards. Currently, these placards offer immunity from, to vehicles from the ordinance when displayed on an oversized vehicle. The ordinance was adopted in 2009 in response to citizen complaints regarding commercial trucks and RVs being stored on public streets. Before the ordinance, oversized vehicle owners were storing their vehicle on city streets by moving their large vehicles every 71 hours, avoiding a citation thus skirting around the city's 72-hour parking ordinance. Implementation of the ordinance has nearly eliminated the storage of RVs and trucks on city streets, and as a result, enabled police resources to be utilized more efficiently. Over time, a few of the oversized vehicle owners have found their vehicle is immune to the ordinance due to the exception granted to disabled placards and license plates. This type of behavior is common to nearly every parking regulation in the city. Some vehicle operators will find a way to skirt around the rules, much like they did 72-hour parking ordinance by moving their vehicle every 71 hours. Removing the placard exemption would correct the matter the police are dealing with. We have collaborated with the police department on this matter who concur with the proposal to remove the placard exception from the current ordinance. If this action is approved by the city council, the change is expected to reduce the number of complaints that police would handle involving abuse of disabled placards, strengthen an already effective tool for the police, and address a key weakness that has been identified and exposed in the current ordinance by select individuals. Here's a page from municipal code stating all the exceptions under which the ordinance does not apply. The two words covered in red would be removed from the ordinance if approved by the city council this evening. In October of last year, the city's Traffic and Transportation Advisory Commission reviewed this matter and unanimously recommended the proposed ordinance amendment be approved by the city council. So, with that, the recommendation of both staff and the Traffic and Transportation Advisory Commission is in the staff report and listed on this slide right here. We also have representatives from the Thousand Oaks Police Department also available besides Mr. Hidari and myself to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions of staff? I don't see anyone.
I'd like to move approval, if that's appropriate.
Okay. I don't see Mr. Adam. Oh, there you are. Okay. Very good. So, we do have a motion on the floor to move approval of item 8B.
Madam Mayor, can we close the hearing?
Oh, yes. We do need to close the hearing. Very good. Thank you.
That's part of my motion, close the hearing.
There you go. Thank you. Well, if there are no questions, then we can call for a vote.
I just, Madam Mayor, I'd just like to add, I'm totally in favor of this. People gaming the system by parking these oversized vehicles on the street, that has to stop. They can be hazardous. They limit sightlines. They're aesthetically displeasing, and they jut out into the street and impede traffic. This is a very good loophole to close.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, let's vote.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember McNamie?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Engler?
Yes.
And Mayor Bill de la Peña?
Yes.
And that motion carries 5-0. And Madam Mayor, I have an ordinance title to read into the record.
Go ahead.
Ordinance amending section 424, oversized vehicles, parking prohibited of chapter three of title four of Thousand Oaks Municipal Code for elimination of exception for oversight vehicle display placards.
Thank you. All right. And now to a department report, number 9A, Climate and Environmental Action Plan. That is going to be presented by Dr. Cox, I believe. I cannot find my piece of paper. There we go.
That's correct.
Here we go. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm here this evening to provide an update on the development of the city's Climate and Environmental Action Plan, or CEAP. Also with me this evening and available to answer your questions are sustainability analysts Ken Wang and Joan Brooks. Commitment to environmental leadership and the climate action plan were among the top 10 guiding principles arising out of the city's Visioning 2064 process that took place in 2014. And council has set the development of the Sustainability Strategic Plan as one of its top 10 priorities. Here we show the elements of the Sustainability Strategic Plan that are underway at the city and their relationship to the Climate and Environmental Action Plan. Our goal is to develop the Climate and Environmental Action Plan in parallel with the general plan over the next 12 months so that they are aligned and mutually supportive. The CEAP will detail the strategies and actions that the city will pursue to protect the environment and address the challenges of climate change. Actions will be aimed at improving overall public health, sustaining a healthy environment, reducing air pollution, protecting our energy supply, mitigating climate change and its impacts, and supporting a healthy economy into the future. A critical starting point for such efforts is the development of the citywide greenhouse gas inventory, which documents the quantity of emissions of so-called greenhouse gases, or GHGs, that are responsible for climate change. Sources include both GHG emissions that the city has direct control over and those that result from community activities, which are directly or indirectly impacted by local government programs, implementation of state mandates, planning and development decisions. The inventory has now been completed, and here we show the breakdown of community-wide emissions by source. Transportation makes up approximately 50% of community emissions, followed by electricity at 22% and natural gas at 15%, with minor sources such as refrigerants, waste, and water treatment and delivery following. Electricity emissions were substantially reduced in 2019 and since then due to participation in Clean Power Alliance, and I'll show that in a few minutes. Significant strides have been made in reducing community emissions over the past decade, even as the city's population has grown, with 2018 emissions approximately 13 and a half percent lower than 2010 values. This reduction is primarily due to energy conservation, a transition to more renewable energy, and improved vehicle fuel efficiency. The city is doing its part in reducing emissions also, with 2019 emissions from municipal operations approximately 20% below those of 2010. This reduction is due to the purchase of 100% renewable electricity, initially for buildings in 2011 through the Direct Access Program, and additionally in 2019 for water pumping through Clean Power Alliance. Here we show historical and future community greenhouse gas emissions based on a business-as-usual model, i.e. assuming that there are no specific further mitigation actions taken by the city. Transportation, making up approximately 50%, is shown in orange at the bottom. Then, electricity above that in yellow, then the natural gas shown in brown, and the more minor sources above that. You can see a significant reduction in GHG emissions from electricity, the yellow area, result in 2019 and 2020 due to the council's decision to switch to Clean Power Alliance as the community's default provider of electricity at 100% renewable energy, which occurred in early 2019. In this business-as-usual scenario, emissions are projected to be 28% below 2010 values by 2030, and increasing slightly due to population growth for an approximate 25% reduction by 2050. You can also see that since electricity emissions reductions have largely been realized, the remaining ways to achieve significant further reductions are to address the other major emission sources, which are transportation and natural gas use. To address natural gas use, an increasing number of cities in the state are adopting building codes that prohibit or disincentivize future natural gas connections and require new development to be all-electric. Taking a look at our transportation emissions, these are broken down as shown here. The largest share come from passenger vehicles. Emission reductions in transportation can be achieved through more fuel-efficient vehicles, through a transition to electric or alternative fuel vehicles, coupled with the electricity being supplied by renewable energy, or a reduction in vehicles, in vehicle miles traveled. Vehicle miles can best be reduced by providing opportunities for people to live and work in the city or telecommute, or to telecommute by providing more walkable neighborhoods, walkable access to services, and higher-density residential and/or mixed-use development with onsite access to services. Last August, the Sustainability Division began distributing a survey to gauge the community's views on climate and environmental issues. The survey was distributed through our website, e-newsletter, and the Acorn newspaper. Over 800 responses were received. Here we present a brief summary of some important findings. Clearly, the community feels that it's very important to protect both the environment and reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. The larger majority of respondents want the city to set GHG emission reduction targets aligned with those of the state, 40% by 2030 and 80% by 2050. These are the reductions necessary to avoid catastrophic warming as projected by scientists throughout the world and align with those of other countries. Half the respondents believe that we should be more aggressive than that. In addition, 55% of respondents believe that we should be aggressive in new building energy standards. When asked about concerns over the impacts of climate change, respondents are most concerned about the impacts on public health, on future generations, and on open space. The most significant barriers to addressing climate change are perceived to be cost, difficulty in changing habits, and lack of leadership at a federal level. The community will be engaged in the plan development through a series of four stakeholder meetings and a larger public meeting to be held in the first half of this year. They can sign up for information and participate in the meetings at teaoaks.org/climaction. Thank you. That concludes my presentation, and we're available to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Dr. Cox. Really appreciate that. Are there any questions of Dr. Cox, our Sustainability Manager? Mr. McNamie, followed by Mr. Engler.
Question I have is, again, just to clarify for those who are viewing in, these are state-mandated goals that we're asked as a city to comply. Is that correct?
We're not mandated to have a climate action plan or to meet these, but increasingly, if we are seeking funding from the state for a variety of different programs, sometimes it's required that we do have a program, a plan in place. And also, as far as the general plan goes, with all development decisions, the city is required, or an environmental impact report is required to look at the greenhouse gas emissions resulting from those developments. If we have a climate action plan in place... If we have a climate action plan in place, then we don't also have to go through that separate EIR for the GHG emissions. So it has advantages in that respect.
If I might add to that, Kevin, just really quickly, they also they also bond rating agencies commonly ask for that information or that type of documentation when doing bond ratings.
So if I understand this correctly, is that if you, a city does not move in that direction, then the state will have financial pain that will occur because of it? Is that a fair statement?
Increasingly so. So, for example, if we want to get state funding for electric vehicle chargers or electric vehicles in our fleet and things like that, often it's required that we have those plans in place.
Okay, and these are actually, I would consider, very ambitious goals. What's your opinion as to whether or not we can actually reach these goals at the time deadline which has been established?
So I think the goals are reachable. We will be assisted by the regulations regarding clean vehicles. For example, the transition to electric vehicles and to clean vehicles in California in particular will really help to reduce our transportation emissions. And then, obviously, you know, it depends to some extent on the measures that we decide to take on you know, our land use decisions, for example, with the general plan, and whether or not we want to adopt any what so-called reach codes or codes that improve our energy efficiency requirements in new construction, for example. But they're certainly reachable.
Well, time will tell, and hopefully we can get there.
Mayor Protim Engler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Cox, the the state, of course, wishes that we go this direction, which is, which I think aligns somewhat with the findings that your survey showed as well, with a vast majority of the people were inclined to become better stewards of our of our environment, so to speak. Is that, is that the way I remember the information, Ms. Cox?
Oh, yes, for sure. The majority of the respondents to our survey were definitely in favor of having a plan, a climate action plan, and one that would at least meet these state aggressive goals of the state.
So, so the, the minimum, I suppose, would be the, if I remember the numbers right, eighty percent of our 2010 amounts by 2050, and was it forty percent at 2030?
Yes, that's true. The goals that we're proposing, at least the preliminary ones, are for a reduction of forty percent by 2030 and then eighty percent by 2050. It's important to bear in mind that we're looking at this as a ten-year plan, and so the target that council sets tonight is a preliminary goal for developing the plan, and that the final target will be something that would be contained within the plan when that comes back to you for review and approval later in the year. So setting targets tonight does not preclude them being changed either one way or another in the final plan that comes to you in in the fall. Ultimately, the emission reductions will be determined by the strategies that the community is prepared to adopt, and they'll be participating in this development of the climate action plan. And so, you know, in particular, they're gonna, they're gonna depend significantly on actions related to natural gas use and land use decisions that are made in the general plan update, which are an important driver of the transportation emissions. So this is a sort of a working goal to start with, and then trying to develop strategies around that. But the actual final target would come before you as part of the plan in the fall.
And since these are, these are goals that we happen to align with what the state wants us to go to, apparent to our surveys. Is there a penalty if we don't achieve the goal, or is this something, this is a goal that we're really gonna try to achieve? And it's more important that we, in the effort rather than really the result, or how would you see that?
There, there is not a penalty if we don't meet the goal. As far as as far as EIRs are concerned, I'm not exactly sure where that lies with respect to the emissions reductions or, you know, aligning new developments and things along that line with the, with the general plan. But as far as just the climate action plan, there are no penalties for not meeting those particular targets.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
Very good. Mr. Adam, before we go back to Councilmember McNamee. Mr. Adam, did you?
Yeah, Kevin can go ahead. Did he have a question?
Okay, yeah, he did. Okay, Councilmember McNamee.
Oh, thank you. The question I have here is that essentially, transportation is one of the, is actually the largest GHG that we're looking at here and how to tailor that. And you suggested, while we're looking at the advent and the introduction and the growth of electric cars and other options. Is it gonna get to the point where we'll say, okay, everyone can have a combustible engine, and you must have a certain miles per gallon with your vehicle, and you can drive only so many miles within the city? You must compel yourself to use bicycles. What do we have other than market forces that are already underway to get us to that goal? Because I don't want to have a city that's gonna say to people that you have limitations on your freedoms of movement and how you want to move in a legal aspect, just so we meet these goals. And I can see some conflict coming up where the the meetings that you're having with the community come up with things that may not really align with freedom of movement and choice of how they want to move through the city just to meet these goals. Dr. Cox, what's your thoughts on that?
I don't see that there's any way that the city is gonna be mandating what kind of vehicles people have or when they can drive or not drive. It's more that the state has, has put in place new restrictions on the vehicles that will be sold in the future. So, you know, Governor Newsom has an executive order that all new passenger vehicles will be zero emission by 2035. So obviously, that's gonna make a big difference once we get that far along. Before that, there is a transition certainly to cleaner vehicles and higher-mileage vehicles. And that, again, those standards have been put in place by the state. I see it more as the city supporting some of those efforts through charging infrastructure, for example, you know, whether it requires charging infrastructure to go in with, you know, new development, residential or commercial. Those are the kinds of things that the city would be involved in and how much infrastructure the city itself provides. So the city is more in a position to facilitate these and support this transition. You know, whether that's through, as I said, deployment or, or the permitting of, of charges or even changes to the transit program, for example.
A follow-up on that question is that some of the housing that we have here in Thousand Oaks, one bedroom has 1.6 parking spaces allocated for a unit. Well, if you've got two people living there and they have to have one car to go to Glendale, the other one to go to Camarillo, 1.6 doesn't work, but yet 1.6 parking spaces is wholly inadequate for two cars, because which part of the transmission do you leave in the parking structure and which one, what rest of the car goes out on the street? And that, to me, that appears to be social engineering, trying to force people into one vehicle, and the other person has to figure out transportation either locally and/or public transportation to get them to Camarillo or Ventura, or whatever the case may be. What's your thoughts on that type of approach? Should we be restricting the amount of parking for residents here in the developments that are being proposed? Or accommodate what is currently being used, as in two vehicles while parking per one bedroom? So that way they do have it, and then let the market take care of the transition towards more environmentally friendly vehicles?
I'm probably not the best person to answer those planning decisions necessarily. But one of the things that we will be examining as we develop the climate action plan is to look at building codes and the codes that support, you know, the, the transition to reduced emissions. And we'll look at the codes that other cities have put in place and the ones that are working well. So part of the planning process is to sort of evaluate those things. I don't have an answer to that right now. I don't know if anyone else is, wants to comment on that.
I just, I'll just, you know, speak to briefly Councilmember McNamee. So parking requirements are set on a, tied to zoning and entitlement, and they're set on a basis, sometimes that's directed by the state. And so, in this case, it wouldn't tie directly into this, but one of the benefits of doing a comprehensive general plan update is that it allows for you to look at everything at a comprehensive basis. And so, you know, part of the need to accommodate the additional housing units that the, that we'll have to plan for in this next general plan will mean that the, that you'll have to look at where those are gonna be sited, where are they located to job centers, and how do you increase walkability and reliance? But also, how do you provide the necessary infrastructure around that?
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Adam, did you have something to add?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Just, just a comment. I mean, I think Thousand Oaks is well on the way to lowering our GHDs, and we were perennial Beacon Award winners. We've lowered GHDs in the community side, on the municipal side. And I do want to say briefly, commend Dr. Cox and our committee for the elimination, the eventual elimination of single-use plastics here in town. I was just reading the other day, production and the incineration of these products produces eight hundred and fifty million metric tons of greenhouse gases a year. It's equivalent to a hundred and eighty-nine, five-hundred-megawatt coal power plants. And our city has boldly stepped ahead, and within a year we will eliminate that source of greenhouse gases. So thank you, Dr. Cox, for that. And as, as Mr. Powers is saying, you know, this, this all goes back to AB 32. Fran Pavly was co-authored that bill that, that wants to lower greenhouse gases. Then we had a sister bill come up, a Senate bill that linked it to vehicle miles traveled. That's the big key here. Fifty percent of greenhouse gases come from, come from cars. And Thousand Oaks is a car-dependent city, was designed that way. There's a walkability factor that is assigned to all our homes. My home here in Thousand Oaks got a nine. Nine out of a hundred, totally car-dependent. But we are working slowly but surely to try to change that, that equation. And that comes up with, with what we're trying to do on the Boulevard, trying to make it a walkable area, trying to have people live and work in the same area. Seventeen-ten's a perfect example. Two-nine-nine's another good example. Just as the state said, these are mixed-use projects that people can live and work and have amenities and not have to get in their cars. People are tired of having to drive everywhere when they need, you know, just the slightest thing. So we are on the right track there. These land use decisions are important. They'll come up in the general plan update, and they will also go a long way, I think, in lowering greenhouse gases. We don't, we don't need people to commute from here to Ventura, from here down to the valley. We want them to stay here and work, and we're headed in that right direction with the way we're anticipating building some housing. So, well, I guess at that point I could make a motion. And I think this is a great idea. We need to comply with the state. And I do think electric cars are the way of the future. Tesla stock's up seven, seven hundred percent in the last year. It seems to be a more and more popular way to go with driving, so.
Mr. Adam, Mr. Adam, if you could just wait with your motion, because I actually would like to weigh in on this. Thank you. Would like to weigh in as well. These are, of course, wonderful goals, ambitious goals, but I believe that Thousand Oaks has been the leader, really, in terms of the environment and environmental protection and fuel efficiency with our fleet, for example, Hill Canyon Treatment Plant, our municipal service center. I mean, we are a leader in sustainability. And therefore, I would like to see, as has been suggested also by different members of this stakeholders group, to see if we could not increase from forty to forty-five percent. And then instead of eighty, why don't we go to, to one hundred or a net zero? So I really would like, knowing what Thousand Oaks is capable of doing, and knowing how committed people are to clean air and clean water, that perhaps we could move that, those goals just a tad bit higher. We have several speakers here tonight, by the way, so that is why we should also wait with a motion and wait to hear from, from them.
Okay.
All right. So I will then go to the speakers. First one up is Kat Selm, and she's joining us via video. Good evening.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, councilmembers and Mayor Bill de la Pena for your time tonight. My name is Kat Selm, and I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks and a co-founder of the Kaneho Climate Coalition. And before my emotional plea, I just want to first thank you and commend city council and city staff for your leadership on climate and sustainability. It's, it makes me really proud to live here. In the four and a half billion years that the Earth has existed, it has undergone five major mass extinction events. Currently, we're in the sixth, but this one, it's a little different. It's the only mass extinction to actually be caused by another species, humans. Some experts estimate that we could be losing as many as two thousand species a year. As a biologist, I can't describe the pain and grief that our jobs now entail. It feels as though we're tasked with plugging holes in a sinking ship. It's heartbreaking and it's terrifying, because we humans aren't actually exempt from this fate. We rely on nature, clean air, water, and food just as much as the next mammal. However, we're the only ones that can actually fix this. We have the ability to cause and solve all of our own problems. We're mighty powerful, and with that power comes great responsibility. Selfishly, I'd like to do more with my life other than trying to save our oceans from becoming garbage dumps and watching migratory songbirds go extinct. I want to be able to raise a family and know that I'm bringing children into this world that will be allowed a quality of life or at least a chance at survival. I'd like to know that their lives will not be spent entirely on correcting the mistakes of past generations. But the longer we wait to reduce our emissions, the less this option seems likely. According to the International Food Policy Research Institute, four-point-eight billion people, that's more than half of the world's population, and half of the global grain production will be at risk due to water stress by 2050 if a business-as-usual emissions scenario persists. That's why tonight I'm urging you to adopt stricter greenhouse gas emission reductions goals than those recommended. The goals proposed in item nine A are simply not enough to maintain habitable and abundant life in Thousand Oaks. According to the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, the IPCC, limiting global warming to 1.5 degrees Celsius would require rapid and far-reaching transitions in all of our sectors. Global net human-caused emissions of CO2 would need to fall by forty-five percent from 2010 levels by 2030, reaching net zero at 2050. I urge the council to consider the IPCC's recommendations of forty-five percent reduction and net zero by 2050. California's governor is actually calling for even stricter emissions reductions than those outlined by the IPCC, with carbon neutrality set for 2045 with the state of California. Moreover, many jurisdictions in California that have climate action plans have established targets that exceed the state's goals. So let's keep Thousand Oaks habitable and safe for future generations and make our reputation one of environmental leadership regionally. So let's keep Thousand Oaks habitable and safe for future generations and make our reputation one of environmental leadership regionally and internationally. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next up, we have Faith Grant, joining us via video. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Faith Grant. I'm a twenty-year resident of Thousand Oaks. I'm a member of the Canejo Climate Coalition and I'm a co-group lead of the Canejo Valley Citizens Climate Lobby, which is a bipartisan national organization working on federal legislation to put a fee on carbon to bring down the GHG levels. But tonight I want to jump on a local opportunity to reduce GHG levels. I commend the city of Thousand Oaks for their efforts to reduce GHG and I respectfully urge the city to adopt more aggressive targets. At the very least, IPCC is recommended net zero by twenty fifty. Additionally, while targets in the Public Works Report may be aligned with the state of California, they do not reflect the California Governor's September twenty twenty executive order mandating carbon neutrality by twenty forty-five. The staff report notes that, quote, "more than two hundred local jurisdictions across California have responded with climate action plans, the majority which establish targets in line with or exceeded the state's goals," end of quote. Ventura County is warming faster than thirty-nine million counties in the U.S. per the Union of Concerned Scientists. This is a primary reason it is imperative that Thousand Oaks join the list of two hundred cities and adopt more aggressive GHG targets. I would also like to note in the staff report that the justification to meet City Council Goals B, which is to ensure the city remains one of the most desirable places to live, work and visit, and E, to retain its role and reputation as a leader in protecting the environment and preserving limited natural resources. I don't agree that the proposed GHG levels achieve B and E. Extreme heat, drought, wildfires do not make Thousand Oaks a desirable city any longer and Thousand Oaks is not an environmental leader if it isn't willing to join the cities that are adopting more aggressive levels. Let's adopt carbon neutrality levels by twenty forty-five and make Thousand Oaks a desirable place to live in again and build Thousand Oaks' reputation as an environmental city leader. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Roseanne Witt, followed by Clint. Good evening.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Roseanne Witt with the Canejo Climate Coalition. I'm urging an emissions reduction target in line with science of no less than IPCC's directive of forty-five percent of twenty-ten levels by twenty thirty and net zero by twenty fifty. In September, our governor ordered carbon neutrality no later than twenty forty-five. Either goal is more ambitious than tonight's proposal and necessary, given the urgency of our situation. I've followed the climate science for two decades and though I've lived in California forty-two years, until the Thomas Fire, when Santa Anna's blew an unthinkable thirteen days, I never gave wildfire a thought. But since my home and husband were directly threatened in the Woolsey Fire, I think about it every day and grow anxious every time the winds howl. Thousand Oaks' average temperature is projected to rise three to five degrees by twenty forty for an additional three and a half weeks per year of heat over ninety degrees and a five hundred percent increase in days over one hundred. Living in the fastest-warming county in the lower forty-eight makes a stronger target mandatory. Extreme heat makes hiking, one of my personal passions, life-threatening and toxic wildfire smoke has confined all of us inside our homes for weeks at a time. But expect far worse if we don't target emissions reductions as current science demands. IPCC concluded that every fraction of extra heating will worsen climate impacts by a lot. That extra half a degree that IPCC's directive is intended to avoid places increasing demands on our state's already strained grid, making heat waves more deadly. It intensifies wildfires polluting our air and raising health costs. It reduces our snowpack, worsening drought and water scarcity. It expands the range of mosquitoes carrying deadly disease and sets massive numbers of refugees in motion, risking widespread economic collapse far worse than COVID. My family has already discussed how much longer we can stay here before it becomes too dangerous not to leave. One friend relocates next week. Four more dear families whom I've known since moving here twenty-six years ago are also eyeing the exits. Climate chaos is personal. It threatens everything I love, my family and friends, my enjoyment at the outdoors, my home, my community. Since IPCC reached consensus two years ago, data shows feedback loops and the pace of heating is accelerating. Their directive is the minimum you can consider to have any chance of ensuring a prosperous Thousand Oaks going forward. Be courageous and do what's right. Please raise the target. Thank you for considering my comments.
Thank you. Next speaker is Clint. Not sure we have a Clint and a Gordon Clint. No, we have Clint. Clint is first and then followed by Gordon Clint. There you are. Clint, good evening.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Clint and I'm a member of the Canejo Valley Chapter of Citizens Climate Lobby, the Chalice Climate Action Team and a co-founder of the newly-formed Canejo Climate Coalition. I would like to take this opportunity to thank everyone and anyone and everyone in Thousand Oaks City Government that is taking climate change seriously and working toward a sustainable city. I would especially like to to thank John Brooks and Helen Cox of the Sustainability Division for their dedication, excellent communication and commitment to making Thousand Oaks an environmentally conscious city. I'm going to keep it short tonight and just point out that the IPCC, the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, says that the entire world will need to reach net zero by twenty fifty to avoid the worst impacts of climate change. I would ask that the city council consider the IPCC's recommendations of a forty-five percent reduction of greenhouse gas emissions by twenty thirty and a net zero by twenty fifty at minimum. Aggressive action is needed to keep Thousand Oaks at the forefront of the effort to tackle climate change. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you very much. And our last speaker is Gordon Clint. Good evening. We do need your microphone on, Mr. Clint.
Thank you.
Okay, my name is Gordon Clint. My microphone is on, right? And I live in Newbury Park. And I'm a member of the Chalice Climate Action Team, the Citizens Climate Lobby, the Sierra Club and the Canejo Climate Coalition. I'm proud to be a citizen of this city because it cares about acting for a livable future. I'm thankful that we have a Sustainability Division that is placing these recommendations before you. Greenhouse gas reduction goals are an important step in addressing our global existential crisis. Five years ago in Paris, the entire world agreed to avoid catastrophe, we must limit the Earth's temperature rise to one point five degrees Celsius or two point seven degrees Fahrenheit. To accomplish that goal, scientists with the United Nations Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change determined that we must reduce the greenhouse gas being released into the atmosphere. They concluded we need to get to forty-five percent of two-ten levels by twenty thirty and net zero by twenty fifty. You've heard many speakers mention that, but that's where we got to go. Our cities, states and nations must do their part if we are to preserve human civilization. This is serious. If we don't get this under control, our grandchildren will suffer and be burdened with unbearable costs. We need to consider future generations in our plans. I urge you to adopt the stronger IPCC goals. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Clint was our last speaker regarding item nine A. So Mrs. Cox, I would like to go back to you about some of the statements and would we be able to raise the initial to forty-five percent and then to net zero by twenty fifty?
Um, I, we can set whatever targets you choose. I would say that as we get into the planning stage, what we should do is have the stakeholders look at a range of different options and strategies and see what emissions reductions those would generate and present those options to council to choose, you know, based on the on the strategies that they would prefer to adopt. So we don't have to set a hard and fast goal right now. This is a starting point for us to aim for. But as the plan and the the strategies are evaluated, then that would give us sort of a range of emissions reductions that were possible based on which strategies we wanted to adopt. So that might be a possible solution is that council would be presented with those options down the road.
Okay, I think that would be a viable option to do. Any other questions or comments?
Madam Mayor.
Mayor Protem Engler.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Cox, the the proposal you have currently before us is the the state recommendation of forty percent and eighty percent, if I remember right. Is that, that's not the maximum we can go for. Can we go more than that in terms of as we go through this, the process to look at the different techniques that we can use? So this is, this is, in my mind, seems to be like the minimum we're going to shoot for. And is it, is it possible to have low, lower emissions somewhere down the line, depending on what our further studies show?
Absolutely. So I would say this is, we could regard this as a sort of a minimum target and then try to identify strategies beyond this that would reduce emissions further, meeting perhaps the targets that some of the speakers have have proposed. And, you know, do our modeling up. And obviously, you know, ultimately, the reductions are going to be determined by by the strategies. We can, we can make a plan or we can set a target, but unless we have strategies to get us to that target that are acceptable, then, you know, it remains just, just a target. So ultimately, those emissions are going to be determined by what strategies the community is is prepared to adopt. And those are going to be determined by participation of the community over the next few months. One, and including the land use decisions, you know, made made with the general plan. That's going to be a pretty important determining factor also. So important things to weigh up, you know, both with the climate action plan and with the general plan. I would also say that, you know, this is, is it's going to be a ten-year plan. So, yeah, the twenty-thirty targets are important, but we are planning to review it after five years. So we can take another look five years from now and see what's changed, see where we stand, see where the state stands, see what the new international targets are and we can make revisions at that time as we choose.
So it's going to be a living document then. The, but what you proposed today, it it's it's in conformity with the the survey that the citizens were participated in earlier and also in conforming with the the state that we know as of right now. I understand from our speakers that the state may be escalating the 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 wishes for GHG emissions. We're not precluded from adjusting to that as we go forward.
Right, absolutely. The the goals that are in the the staff report are the current state targets with the exception of the state did add a carbon neutrality goal by twenty forty-five and is probably going to evaluate whether to move the targets in line with some of the new IPCC recommendations that the speakers mentioned, which would be a forty-five percent reduction by twenty thirty. That hasn't been adopted as yet. It doesn't prohibit us from adopting it. But I would say that the targets that are in the staff report, maybe we want to set as a sort of a a minimum starting point and then see whether strategists take us and and get those options back back to council when we bring the plan and the strategies back to council.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Jones.
Yeah, I don't know if I'm in full, I guess I've lost the video part, but I'm not very good-looking, so I, I don't mind. If we're going to go to more and more electric devices, rather, particularly for transportation, that means we're going to have to be generating, obviously, more electricity. I wonder if Dr. Cox knows what portion of our electricity approximately is being generated through the use of coal or natural gas? You know, that that creates air pollution as opposed to wind and solar. Do we have any idea how much of of the electricity is being generated through substances that pollute the air when they're burned?
Yes, but that that depends on who your provider is. So obviously, you know, Clean Power Alliance offers different options, including the default, which is a hundred percent renewable. So that's all clean energy. They do have other programs that are lesser amounts and more from natural gas. But the state has what they call a renewable portfolio standard, which means that the these generators, what they call the load-serving entities, the people that put the power on the grid, they and the utility companies have to abide by. And that's called the RPS or Renewable Portfolio Standard, so currently about thirty-six percent of the California energy on the grid. Actually, that may be Southern California Edison. So our provider here, our other provider is Southern California Edison, is about at thirty-six percent renewable right now. And the state has required that the energy going on to the grid is sixty percent renewable by twenty thirty. The other forty percent now isn't necessarily from fossil fuels. In fact, some of that other forty percent is from hydroelectric and from nuclear. So those are also carbon-free. They just don't count as part of what they call the renewable portfolio. So a small and smaller fraction of the electricity is generated from those so-called dirty sources. But Southern California Edison doesn't operate any coal plants anymore. So we do have natural gas plants and we do have other non-carbon sources. Like I said, there's large hydroelectric, etc. But right now, about thirty-six percent comes from solar and wind and geothermal and what's called small hydra, which are the qualifying renewable energy sources.
Are there any other sources other than wind and solar? For example, I've been at the ocean, at the beach, and know those tides can be pretty strong. Is there, is there ever any attempt to 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 try to utilize those ocean tides to generate power?
Yes, so the tidal energy is in place in some areas of the world, in particular in Northern Europe. Some areas are more suited than others. It's a, it's quite an expensive source of energy. So for a region like Southern California that has a lot of other of solar and wind resources, that wouldn't be the most economical one for other areas of the world. That that could be a better alternative, particularly, as I said, other places, Northern Europe and stuff that doesn't have as much sunlight as we do here. But for here, it turns out that it's cheaper to generate that energy from the sun and the wind. But tidal energy is is available. It's just a matter of the economics.
Well, just a final question. Are we expanding these wind farms and solar panels at all right now in California?
Oh, absolutely. It's growing very Oh, absolutely. It's growing very, very fast. In fact, it's now become the cheapest source of electricity for utility companies. In the past, it was cheaper to build a power plant conventional, but now it's actually cheaper to get energy through solar and wind. So they are, they're rapidly expanding.
You, you know, I would go along with the idea that the mayor and, and council in Engler, I believe, about, uh, about expanding these goals. I don't see any problem with doing that. It seems like we'd try harder if we set the goals higher. I don't, I don't think I'm going to be around when we reach these goals or when we reach these years. But, uh, I think we ought to, we ought to expand the goals. I mean, every time a, a halfback grabs a football on a run, he's trying to make a touchdown, isn't he? I mean, he doesn't always make a touchdown, but he's trying to. I don't see any penalty is my point in not making all the way to a goal. But I think the higher you set it, the higher, harder you try. So I'm, I'm for it.
May I?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Go ahead, Mr. Adam.
Thank you. Uh, I must say, I think it makes eminent sense with Dr. Cox who's suggesting, uh, that we go with the, uh, State of California and the staff recommendations. And as a minimum for GHG reduction, as a minimum, uh, these, we're just giving guidance tonight. That can be raised. I'd like to hear what the stakeholder group has to say of over 20 people. And I'd also, uh, since this is tied very closely to the general plan update, I'd like to see how that works out as well, particularly with land use. I'd like to see how some of the people that are ardently in favor of greenhouse gas reduction, which I think most of us are, also will feel about the kind of housing that would result in greenhouse gas reduction. I'm speaking specifically about housing along the one-on-one corridor that we've been talking about for years now, that would be mixed use in, uh, in, in tent and perhaps somewhat denser, but would also make the boulevard walkable, pedestrian friendly, cut down on vehicle miles traveled and greenhouse gases. So I think you see where I'm going here. I want, I want to see if those folks that want GHGs will also accept the reality that comes with housing that will in fact bring GHGs down.
Thank you, Mr. Adam. I think, um, it is clear that they go hand in hand. And this is why this recommendation is very, very important. It's a crucial element really of our general plan update. And so the least we-
Mayor, they do go hand in hand. And we can very well, on the one hand, want to decrease greenhouse gases and then fight every housing development that comes into town that would do just that.
Well, I think it perhaps is an oversimplification to say that every housing development is being fought. I don't think that is absolute, that is accurate.
Let me clarify that. Every housing development that is mixed use or, uh, is denser than a single family home sprawling, uh, type tract. And yes, there has been, there has been very distinct community, although I think in the minority, distinct community opposition to these types of housing. But it's, it's kind of a conundrum because this is also the very housing that these folks want, that, that will lower the greenhouse gases that these folks want. So I, anyway, I'd like to see how that plays out.
Now, the, um, the issue is, is of course the excessive super density, whether that makes sense. If we build excessive super density and still have people driving all over the place to get to their workplace, then, then it doesn't really make any sense. So we have to make sure.
We don't have to debate the nuts and bolts of it right now. I, I'm just trying to talk about it generally speaking. I for one would like to hear more from the general plan update as to the housing element and how it's accepted by the community, which I think will in fact lower greenhouse gases.
And we will have a stakeholder group that will look at this. And so the minimum, the minimum that we can set is, uh, what is recommended tonight. But to the, the language and the recommendation really is too specific because it says we will have a target of 40% below 2010 levels by 2030, when in fact, we would like to see much more flexibility, um, um, in terms of the, the recommendation. So Mr. Adam, if you're willing to make a, um, a, um, motion that would include that this is a minimum, but that the expectation is at the end of the year to exceed that, I think that is something I could go along with.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I would be willing to, uh, make a motion that this be a minimum and that we evaluate the possibility of going higher, depending on certain factors, depending on our stakeholder group, depending on the general plan update, depending on some of the housing element that I've spoken about. All that is very important to see the community attitudes and the willingness to make certain sacrifices to lower greenhouse gases. So yes, I would, I would categorize this as a minimum.
Very good. Uh, we also need to keep in mind our forestry element, also very important to cut, uh, greenhouse gas emissions.
Abs- absolutely.
Mm-hmm. So is that a motion then, Mr. Adam?
That, that would be a motion. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, wonderful. Any comments to the motion? If there are no comments, then I would like to ask-
I do have a comment. Can we rephrase that?
Oh, Mr. Commissioner McNamie, please.
Refrase that again. I think I know where you're going, but I want to hear the wording.
Uh, the motion would be that we accept staff and State of California recommendation for greenhouse gas reduction as a minimum. And it's a minimum guidance with the ability to raise that pending, uh, you know-
The options, yeah.
Pending feedback from the stakeholder group and our general plan update.
Superb, well stated. Thank you. I understand now.
Very good.
Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
I would like to say I'll vote aye to Mr. Adam's motion and I'll, uh, I'll also recognize the sermon.
Councilmember McNamie?
Yes.
Thank you, member of my flock.
Mayor Protem Engler?
Yes.
Mayor Bill Telepinha?
Yes.
And that motion carries 5-0.
Excellent. So now we move on to, let me see, is it the city manager follow-ups? Mr. Powers?
Yes, uh, Mayor Bill Telepinha, thank you. Um, as we close out, uh, um, this, uh, this meeting, I, um, just want to share with you, our next meeting will be two weeks from tonight on the 26th of January. Um, we, uh, will have, uh, a special presentation, a, um, uh, the first of a new one that we're trying, which, uh, thanks to Mayor Bill Telepinha, will be recognizing Person of the Month. And, uh, so that will, we'll have our first one on the 26th of, uh, January. And I'll let her share a little bit about that when we get, uh, get to that, uh, that item. Uh, we do have one public hearing, a microgrid project at the Hill Canyon Treatment Plant, uh, that's currently slated for that evening. And we have our first of what will be, uh, several prescreens that we talked about late last year. Um, and this will be the prescreen for, uh, uh, the applicant Mill Creek at 500 East Thousand Oaks Boulevard, um, which is the, uh, better known as the Nazarene property. So, uh, that will be, uh, heard on the 26th. Uh, those are currently the items that we have up. I will also, the mayor will also be making, uh, annual appointments, uh, to various committees at that meeting. That is all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. And before we adjourn, I would like to share with you, uh, the background of three wonderful people who sadly passed away recently. The first adjournment to this evening will be in memory of Marilyn Jane Hogan, who passed away on November 24th, just days before her 93rd birthday. Lynn was married to her high school sweetheart, Ed, for 69 years. Together, they built a highly successful business and they established a legacy of philanthropy through the Hogan Family Foundation. Lynn graduated Pratt University and contributed to the war effort by volunteering with the Civil Air Patrol during World War II. She became an accomplished commercial artist and worked on Peter Pan for Walt Disney. She had an acumen for finance, which made her a successful businesswoman, managing the growth of Pleasant Holidays, which is a business that she developed with her husband. Lynn was in the top 200 Women in Travel and received many awards and accolades, including being named 2016 Woman of the Year by the Greater Caneo Valley Chamber of Commerce. Lynn was especially proud of the Hogan Family Foundation, which was established to promote entrepreneurship and philanthropic interests. The foundation created a four and a half acre space the public could use as its own oasis, known as the Gardens of the World, right across from City Hall and the lakes. The Hogans were included in the first 100 founders who supported the Civic Arts Plaza and they were recognized by the Alliance for the Arts with a Lifetime Achievement for the Arts Award for their contribution. Lynn was resourceful, fiercely independent, and had an active lifestyle with business and civic-minded endeavors throughout the world. Lynn's legacy was to demonstrate that through courage and compassion, there is nothing that can't be achieved. Lynn is survived by her husband, Ed, their children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren. And so we adjourn in her memory and we offer our gratitude for her legacy and our condolences to her friends and family. Our second adjournment this evening is in memory of a volunteer extraordinaire, Harry Norkin. He passed away Christmas Day at the age of 99. Harry had the wonderful ability to engage and positively impact his peers and community. He was compassionate, innovative, inspiring, and Thousand Oaks has benefited immensely from his lifetime civic achievements. Harry was born at the beginning of the roaring twenties, living through the Great Depression, and he was an Army Air Corps mechanic servicing aircraft during the Allied invasion of France in World War II. Professionally, Harry was an engineer who has worked at Port Juanimi for the Navy and Westinghouse Nuclear in Nevada. As a longtime resident of Thousand Oaks, he participated in numerous volunteer services in our community. Harry served on the Global Center Commission, 18 years at Caneo Free Clinic. He was editor of the newsletter Senior Buzz. He was an English tutor at Caneo Valley Adult School and volunteer in policing. With his wife, Arlene, at ages 68 and 73, together, they ventured out every Thursday morning with a car full of food through the Meals on Wheels program to help homebound seniors. They continued delivering food well into their 80s and 90s. But one of the most important roles for Harry was as a trailblazer and champion for seniors. For 16 years, he was on the Council on Aging, with six of those years as chair. Being a Council on Aging Commissioner requires a considerable amount of time and dedication, but Harry had taken on extra responsibilities, including being part of the Senior Adult Master Plan, serving on the Senior of the Year Board, and working on research for the Livable Community Designation. For his outstanding contributions, the Ventura County Area Agency on Aging presented Harry the Thousand Oaks Senior of the Decade to honor him as an advocate for seniors. Not long ago, Harry said, "I don't get around as much as I'd like to, but every afternoon I walk down to the lobby, meeting people and friends. So if you see me, come over and say hi and tell me what's on your mind." Harry Norkin was the perfect example of optimal aging. He continually encouraged us all to keep giving back regardless of age. We mourn Harry's passing and extend our sincere condolences to his wife, Arlene, family, and his many, many friends. Harry will be greatly missed. And finally, as this is our first council meeting of the year, traditionally, we pay our respects to Alex Fiori, our mayor emeritus. Alex was elected in 1964 as a member of the original city council, and he retired in 1994 after 30 years of community service, including six terms as mayor. He was a founding father and major contributor to the city's master plan as chairman of the Finance Committee. Alex Fiori was not content to just have a seat on the council. No, he was a true leader who was willing to take measured risks for things he believed in. Every aspect of the community has his touch on it, from Wildwood Mesa to the malls. Alex was an innovator with extended vision for our ring of public open space, traffic circulation, housing needs, our parks, and even this building in which I am this evening, City Hall. Alex believed in a self-supporting community, fiscally sound, with a balanced budget every year, a standard which is still maintained to this day. During his time off, Alex could be found most Saturday mornings sitting at his card table at the Jan's Marketplace. Everyone was welcome to sit with him, where he would answer questions, listen to concerns, talk about current events, and would help you with your taxes if you asked. His name has been placed to our community baseball fields, affordable housing complex, and our teen center. Alex Fiori passed away in 2002, living a full life. He had a great sense of humor and a quick wit. As a bridge player, Alex achieved a rank of bronze life master. He loved to travel, played the harmonica and guitar, and was a great fan of all sporting events. To his wife, Katie, and all his family and friends, Alex's commitment, leadership, and passion for public service is an important part of Thousand Oaks's history and future. And with that, we end our first meeting of 2021, a year that I sincerely hope will hold a promise of being a good year. Thank you to all my council and city staff. The meeting is adjourned until our next meeting on January 26th. Be safe, be healthy, please wear your mask, and please distance. Please wear a mask. It's not too much to ask of anyone. Thank you.